The middle school division had forty teams competing. Shore Middle School finished in twentieth place this year, which is actually six places better than last year. That's fantastic. Their top finishes were third place in Scrambler and fifth place in Hovercraft. Their advisors, Mr. Robert Beatty. Uh, Mr. Beatty, if you'd come up and join me. Students, when I call your names, what I want you to do is come up, receive your certificate, shake Coach's hand, and go up on the stage, across this way, shake everybody's hand, come down the steps, and you go back to your seat. Okay? You don't have to stay up here, so that's a good part for you. All right. Members of the Shore team, when I call your name, come on up. Adrian Beatty, Beatty, excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry, yes. It would help if you had the certificates, right? Okay. Charlotte Beatty. Matteo De Chaccio. I went to Italy last year, so I learned how to say that. Sofia Fierilli. Nolan Gibson. Amelia Gordon. Joey Hart. Julia Morris. Leah Morris. Dorian Nanniger. Brooklyn Noraki. Carolyn Scott. Joey Telup. Liam Wolf. And Nicholas Yamamoto. Let's congratulate these students. I have to tell you, this is the fun part, doing things with great students, this is a lot of fun, it really is. Congratulations, Coach. For Memorial, they finished in sixth place overall. Their top finishes were: first place in both Disease Detectives and Metric Mastery; second place in Scrambler, Anatomy and Physiology, and Hovercraft; third place in Reach for the Stars, Entomology; fourth place in Meteorology; fifth place in Fossils; and also fifth place in Optics. Their advisors, Mr. Brian Swigert. Mr. Swigert, Coach Swigert, if you'd come up and join me. Memorial students, same things we just did. Adicia Bajaj. Bajaj. Thank you. I love having the coaches here, they can correct it right away. Max Billings. John Brostel. Ethan Dietzel. Shafayan Hassan. Dylan Fedor. Kaylee Hall. Nolan Harney. Joey Marchaza. Michael Wenz. Adam Oliver. Corbin Ott. Kevin Pastore. Jacob Prainer. Calvin Rice. A.J. Ritz. Gino Ritz. Corey Sax Nielsen. Maria Shwikarath. Ellie Shwikarath. Alex Sheeh. Emily Swigert. Jack Zemansky Smith. Alexandra Tamura. Mason Wills. Cody Wills. And Charlie Yoke. I think it's important to point out what a huge accomplishment this is for both teams, and we're excited to see what the future holds for when they move on into the high school eventually. Speaking of the high school, Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, this evening is my great pleasure to recognize our Menter High School Science Olympiad students and advisors that qualified for the state competition. High School also had forty teams in the competition. Menter High finished eighth place overall. They had ten, top ten finishes, which were in the category of Hovercraft State Champions. In Electric Vehicle, second place; third place, Bungee Drop; fourth place in Dynamic Planet, Helicopter, Robot Tour, and Windpower; fifth place in Disease Detectives; sixth place in Forensics; and sixth place in Fossils. Their advisors are Mrs. Michelle Pugh, Mickey, and Mrs. Carol Poland. Would you two please come join me up front? We also have, we also have two captains, Caitlin Morris and Emily Gerard, and ladies, would you come join us up here as well? All right, here we go. Jacob Armstrong. Biagio De Chaccio. Aiden Deraney. Christian Edwardson. Ayesha Faruki. Parker Geiger Duganzic. Zach Gibson. Emily Gerard. Isabella Grabowski. Kayla Hinkel. Nathan Lowe. Samantha McGuinness. Leah Meckler. Nathan Meckler. Owen Medved. Caitlin Morris. Madison Noraki. Brennan O'Connor. Ryan Oliver. Mark Pastore. Elizabeth Plumley. Ria Reyna. Gavin Rick. Jaden Russell. Zaron Chams. Ben Sherman. Demetrius Stradakos. Malatian. Ben Yoke. Anousri Zimmerman. Just a couple more words real quick, and then I'll turn it over to the next person, Mr. Crow. Congratulations to all these students who worked incredibly hard in preparing for the state competition and showing excellent results. They had a great season. Thank you to our vet coaches, who are teachers or parents. They give up their time each week to prepare students for their event. It's a lot. These coaches are a huge factor in the success of our Science Olympiad teams, and they have been for years. In addition, a special shout-out to our parents for your support throughout the season. Thank you. All of you contribute in some way, and it most definitely makes a difference in your students' lives. Speaking on behalf of the advisors and all the coaches and team members, they would like to thank the members of the Board for all your support. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, it is with great pleasure that I get to be here tonight to recognize our robotics team at Menter High School, our award-winning robotics team. Would our head coach, Alec Byram, and our business partners from Process Technology, Ken Kay and Rook Zooks, please join me at the podium? On Saturday, April 26th, the Menter High School Robotics Team, with the bot, Nort Again, competed in the 15th Annual AWT Robotics Competition. The competition consists of student-built bots around fifteen pounds battling each other similarly to the popular TV show BattleBots, where each team attempts to disable the other bot. At the AWT BattleBots, there was also competitions for the best engineered, best engineering documentation, and best team interview. The team, the Menter High School team, consists of five students. Katie Palance, who is our driver and team captain; Nick Magistrelli, who is our weapon operator; Ben Nutter, who is our bot handler; Teagan Daly and Alexis Brent, who are both equipment managers. The team performed as flawlessly as we could have hoped for and ended up winning every possible award and sweeping through five rounds of competition, never losing a match to win first place at this year's AWT BattleBot Competition, which is just a tremendous, tremendous honor. It was an epic day, and we are extremely proud of the hard work, humility, and dedication of our five students and our three advisors as well. And then, after all that success, this past weekend on May 9th and 10th, the Menter High School Robotics Team was invited and qualified for the NRL Nationals in Springfield, Ohio. The competition draws teams from high schools and colleges as far away from California. The Menter High School Robotics went on to secure a fourth-place finish out of thirty-two teams, winning all three rounds in pool play and securing a spot in the sixteen-team knockout round. After winning the first match, their day came to an end in the round of eight, barely losing to another team by getting stuck on a wall. We wish Katie and Teagan the best of luck as they are set to graduate and start the next chapter of their lives. At this time, I'm going to introduce our students. We only have four students that were able to make it today, so don't feel like you need to hold your applause to the end. Please applaud them as much as you possibly can as they say their names. Up first, Alexis Brent. Ben Nutter, who's not able to be here today, he's at Driver's Ed in Wichita, and finally, Congratulations to all of our students, Mr. Byram, Mr. Kay, and Mr. Zooks. And for any of our Science Olympiad students, if you're rising high school students, please feel free to talk to Mr. Byram next year. We're always looking for more students to be on our robotics team. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, at this time, I would like to recognize Jojo Cherian for being the recipient of the R.A. Horn Outstanding Student Award. The R.A. Horn Outstanding Achievement Award for a student is presented to an exemplary special education student from each of Ohio's sixteen state support team regions. This award was established twenty-five years ago by the Ohio Department of Education in honor of the late Dr. Raymond A. Horn, Assistant Superintendent of Public Instruction, emeritus. This prestigious award recognizes students' remarkable performance. Acknowledged as the national leader in the field of special education, Dr. Horn devoted more than sixty years of service to improving the quality of life and learning for students with disabilities. Dr. Horn left behind a legacy and a challenge to ensure that every student with a disability be given the respect and the opportunities to which they are entitled. The recipient of the R.A. Horn Outstanding Achievement Award is Jojo Cherian from Memorial Middle School. Jojo. Jojo has shown remarkable growth and dedication in transitioning to middle school. She has navigated with confidence and quickly adapted to the increased academic expectations and new social dynamics. Jojo has participated in extracurricular activities, demonstrated leadership, teamwork, and a strong work ethic. Jojo is committed and driven, and she is a role model for what can be accomplished with hard work and determination. Congratulations, Jojo. Madam President, members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, at this time, I would like to recognize several staff members for receiving the Franklin B. Walter Outstanding Educator Award. The Franklin B. Walter Outstanding Educator Award is given to an educator or team from each of the sixteen state support teams in Ohio who have made extraordinary contributions to the education of students with disabilities. This award is given in honor of the late Franklin B. Walter, Superintendent of Public Instruction from 1977 until 1991, a post held longer than any other state superintendent in Ohio's history. With over fifty years of service as a teacher and administrator, Dr. Walter's leadership is evident in many of Ohio's quality educational initiatives and programs. Among these is the development of the nation's first statewide plan for children with disabilities. This year, the members of our Sterling Morton Unit Team are the recipients of the Franklin B. Walter Outstanding Educator Award. The team consists of seven highly-trained, professional, certified educators who go above and beyond every day to meet the needs of our students in our cross-categorical classrooms. Together, the team finds a way to meet the academic and social needs of each student while making sure each of them develop a sense of belonging. The team continually communicates and collaborates to ensure they are challenging each student to reach their potential. I am extremely pleased to be able to recognize the individual members of the team for this outstanding achievement. Katie Clark. Amanda De Caesar. Sarah DiGeronimo. Jessica Bendelli. Brianna Ragazzo. Ellen Silva. And Katie Sanford. Congratulations. would like to recognize our retiring faculty and staff. We wanted to thank them for their many years of committed service and wish them happiness and good health in their retirements. I would like to call Mrs. Burnett to the podium to begin our presentations. Soon, we will be celebrating the graduation of our high school seniors. Tonight, we celebrate a different type of graduation, that of our 2024-25 retirees. It is with mixed emotions that we recognize our retiring certified and classified staff. We thank them for their many years of dedicated service and wish them good health and happiness in their retirement. As I call your name, please come forward and remain up front until all the na... Are we going to have him sit down now, Mrs. Burnett? Okay, we'll have you sit back down, so scratch that. To start things off, Terry Augusta. Terry spent thirty years with Menter Schools. Terry started as a classroom assistant, working as a secretary throughout the district Rachel Bayjack. Rachel spent twenty-eight years in the School Nutrition Services Department at Memorial Middle School and at Menter High School. Kim Braddock. Kim has also spent twenty-eight years in the School Nutrition Services Department at Memorial Middle School and Menter High School. Christine Burwig. Chris has been with Menter Public Schools since 2007. Chris started as a special education supervisor and has worked as an assistant principal at Shore Middle School before serving as principal at Hopkins Elementary School. Diane Kane. Diane has spent her career at Hopkins Elementary and most recently as a science teacher at Memorial Middle School. Toni Marie Campella-Jarris. Toni Marie has served as a math teacher for Menter Schools for thirty-four years at Memorial Middle School and Menter High School. Paula Coughlin. Paula started with the district as a classroom assistant before moving to the high school to work as a secretary, completing thirty-one years of service. Joan DeMonte. Joan has navigated the roads and weather as a bus operator for the past thirty-two Allison DeMatty. Allison was a bus operator with the district for twenty-two years. Deborah Dreary. Deborah spent her twenty-eight years with Menter Public Schools as a secretary throughout Mary Ann Friend. Mary Ann has spent thirty-four and a half years as a German and Spanish teacher at our middle schools and at Menter High School. Deb has been a bus operator with the district for thirty-eight years. Michael has served in the role as a classroom assistant in our CTE Construction Management Program for the last six of his forty-six years in education. And on a side note, he was a high school football coach at Richmond Heights, and I played against him when I was a student in high school. Susan Gorga. Susan has been a teacher in the district for eighteen point six years. Is this, is this a math thing? And has enjoyed being a teacher at Garfield Elementary and Memorial Middle School. John spent his career as a math teacher to middle school and high school students in our district. Kathy Kelly. Kathy spent her career as an elementary teacher for thirty-four years, most recently as a third-grade teacher at Ridge Elementary. Susan Kidd. Susan has been with the district for thirty-eight years. And for the past several years has been the lead secretary over at Lake Elementary School. Robin Lutrell. Robin has been a classroom assistant for the past thirteen years at CARES. Jody Morris. Jody spent thirty-three years teaching math to students at our middle schools and high Pamela Nelson. Pam spent her thirty years in the district working as a classroom assistant, office Ann Nikle. Ann has spent her thirty-four years in education as an elementary teacher, most recently as a kindergarten teacher at Bellflower Elementary. Keith Owens. Keith has worked as a custodian at Lake Elementary for forty-one years with Menter Kathleen Ricketti. Kathleen has spent her thirty-four years in education as an elementary teacher, most recently as a third-grade teacher at Ridge Elementary. Donna Rutter. Donna has spent thirty-three years as an intervention specialist at Memorial Middle School and the last six years at Menter High School. Richard Schuss. Richard has spent the last eight years as a custodian at Menter High School. Lisa Taylor. Lisa has enjoyed navigating our roads as a bus operator with the district for the past Just on a personal note, this is a lot of years of experience leaving our district, and it's always hard every year because we have such great people in this district working with our kids every day, no matter what role they play in our district. And I want to personally thank all of you guys for all of the work that you have done, especially our bus drivers, who we've gotten to know quite well over the especially our bus drivers who we've gotten to know quite well over the course of this year since we spent so much time there. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for your service to our district, and please enjoy your retirement. Madam President, this concludes our recognitions here this evening.
We have an executive session on the agenda this evening to discuss employee negotiations. And for those of you who came specifically for district recognitions, this would be a perfect opportunity for you to leave, but you are welcome to stay.
Hey, Carrie, is there a box down there for all of those? I thought Missy left a box there.
Right here, right here.
Here it is.
This pain. Remind if I get some of that action on the
Yes, sanitizer?
Yeah. Please?
No, for you, no.
You want me to get some? I get it. That's fair. That's fair. Turn that guy away, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll get him back his socks. I think we'll be back across the hall.
Oh, yes, you can.
You know, there's a way to solve it. You get out of here.
You know, did you see? The time is running. See? I don't even think I
Yeah, this is always such a That's a crazy one. Yeah, I think so. It doesn't look like they showed up early, so.
All right, as I mentioned, we do have an executive session on the agenda this evening to discuss employee negotiations. And when we reconvene, we will start back up with the approval of minutes and then move through the remainder of the agenda. Do I have a motion to convene to executive session to discuss employee negotiations?
Second?
So any discussion?
I think since Annie and I are fine with skipping, I think the point is moot. So we're okay with skipping it.
Okay.
Unless somebody else wants, has anything to discuss.
Does everyone have their questions answered for negotiations?
I don't have any questions or concerns. I'm good.
All right. Thank you very much. I will withdraw that motion. Or actually, I think Mrs. Jessling will withdraw the motion.
Oh, I withdraw. Withdraw my second.
Thank you. All right, we will move right into the approval of minutes.
So moved? Second. Rose, I don't think we can hear you very well.
I know, yeah.
Is your mic on?
I heard Mrs. Payne motioned, and Mrs. Iapolo had a second?
Other way around.
Oh, other way around, thank you. Is there any discussion about the minutes? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, we have hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Our first speaker is Gil Martello. Thank you. Our second speaker is Susan Sednik.
She's not here.
Our third speaker is Alex Fish. I don't see Alex either. Our next speaker, I do see her, Ms. O'Brien.
Oh, did people expect us to go into executive session and maybe left?
That is possible.
Oh. Maybe give them an opportunity to speak at the end?
I would love it.
Thank you. I am a member of the Lake County America 250 Committee. And that's also known, in case you're interested, if you're interested in these things, it's a semi-quintennial, 250th anniversary or birthday for our country. Now, interestingly enough, it has already started this year because it was Paul Revere's Ride, although he never made it there, but it was what we called the Paul Revere Ride that happened on April 18th, and then the Lexington-Green and Concord Battles, which happened on April 19th. So this, we are well underway. It's a countywide, statewide, countrywide celebration. And there are events, so these two events have already been celebrated. One was right here in, you know, across our county with Paul Revere's Ride. And then the Battles of Lexington-Green and Concord was reenacted at Century Village in Burton, Ohio. So the next coming up event for Lake County that we want to make you aware of is what we're calling Picnics Across America. And so all across our country, there will be family picnics. Ours is going to take place on June 21st at the History Center with free food and games of the 1700s. It will, that evening, they will also do a barn dance, and that will have some cost affiliated with it, but the picnic is absolutely free, and we hope all the families of, you know, Mentor will come and enjoy that. The Captain's Games will be celebrating, and you'll hear all about America 250 through them. My Camp is a reenactment of the American Revolution years. Liberty Camp USA is taking place beginning the week of July 7th through the 11th at Hidden Lakes Pavilion. On July 22nd, the Fairgrounds, you know, we had our county fair will be going on, and they are doing a parade. They're having the bobblehead giveaway of General Payne, and you can have your selfie taken with a reenactor. I mean, there's all sorts of fun things that they will be doing there as well. So one of the things that we really want the schools to be aware of is that there is a bicentennial brass belt. It's on a platform, it stands about this high. It looks like what you would imagine, a liberty belt to have that. And it is available to be brought to schools. They bring it, they leave it for two days. I can tell you that Shore has already signed up for it, but, you know, it can be for football games, it can be for assemblies which talk about, oh, is that my three-minute warning? But
Thank you for sharing.
So bottom line, please, share this news with your students.
Thank you for sharing with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Wall. And then since we have a break, it'll be Mr. Lima and then Ms. Mazika, just to kind of get you queued up there.
Good evening, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, President Cook, Vice President Jessling, and school board members. While there are many things on the agenda that I would like to speak on tonight, the most important topic that everyone should be talking about is a resolution that will be voted on later in regards to fair school funding. Right now legislators in Columbus are working on the state budget. The current proposal should be sounding alarm bells for everyone. Ohio legislators, some, not all, have made it clear that they do not care what Ohioans want or need. They do not care about public education. They do not care to listen, and they certainly do not care to have conversations or provide answers to our questions. The current chair of the Senate Finance Committee, who also happens to be our very own district's state senator, he cannot even give a clear answer on how he feels about the tossing away of promises made by leaders before him, like the Fair School Funding Bill. They have balled it up and tossed it in the trash with no regard to the devastating damage this will do to public education. Instead of going on with facts and bullet points about how this disastrous state budget will impact our public schools here in Mentor and public schools across Ohio, I am going to thank our superintendent, Mr. Heath, and our CFO, Mr. Wade, for making the informative yet depressing video explaining how Mentor Public Schools would be affected while hearing information like this is hard, the need for it being honest, transparent, fact-based, and sharing information from our public school district is so important right now. People are not paying attention, and for those who are, this topic is hard to understand, and there's certainly a lot of false information going around that doesn't help those who are confused. So thank you both for making that video and being straightforward with our community. I hope that all five of our board members can vote yes on this resolution tonight. I can't imagine any reason that you wouldn't. As public school board members, it is your duty to support and advocate for public education. I would also like to encourage anyone and everyone to please contact our state senator, Jerry Serino, again. He is also the chair of the Senate Finance Committee, and tell him how important it is to fund our public schools. Please do not be fooled by the rhetoric that we are actually getting a bump in funds. That is false. If it were 2009, it would be considered a bump, for sure. But things have changed. The price of everything has gone up from utility bills to supplies to necessary wage increases. So you will hear that, yes, technically, they're giving us slightly more than what we got last year, but it is still less than what we were promised with the Fair School Funding Plan, and there is no plan going forward. Our kids deserve better, our students are worth it. And if you, for any reason, don't think that they are, I dare you to go to Cardinal TV YouTube page and watch just a couple of the most recent events held throughout our district, from concerts, art shows, community actions, and just last night from the senior awards ceremony.
Thank you.
Dave Lima. For President Cook, board members, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, House Bill 96 would force school districts to spend or to lose carryover reserves that exceed 30% of a district's operating costs. This is a bad idea, a very, very bad idea. As a taxpayer, it sounds like a good idea. The idea of receiving relief from my property tax bill, more money in my pocket, an idea that Republican legislature keeps repeating. However, my relief would come at the expense of our school district. It is the state's responsibility to fully fund Ohio's public education and should do so by fully funding the Fair School Funding Plan. The Ohio Constitution is clear. It states that the General Assembly is responsible to secure a thorough and efficient system of common schools throughout the state. It makes sense for our schools to have reserves for unexpected expenses, special projects, and in the event of hard times. Our state maintains a $3.9 billion rainy day fund for the very same reasons, unexpected expenses, special projects, and in the event of hard times. School districts must do the same. This proposal, if passed, would reduce my annual property tax by approximately $400 but result in an involuntary budget cut for our schools. According to Mr. Wade, this would result in an $11.1 million loss to the district in fiscal year 2026. Such loss would mean that our district would be even more dependent on local levies to maintain fiscal stability than it is now. In the end, my property tax bill would likely exceed the amount that I am already paying. This proposal is short-sighted, nothing but a political ploy by the supermajority in Columbus designed to hoodwink the taxpayer into thinking that this is a good idea for them. I would gladly forego my $400 benefit for me in order to keep our school district from losing $11.1 million. This bill, if passed, would negatively impact the district's financial stability and adversely affect the district's ability to plan financially. I repeat, this is a very, very bad bill. The bill is moved to the Senate where the position, where the provision can be stricken. So contact members of the Senate Finance Committee and demand that this provision be removed. Now's the time for public action to preserve public education in Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Lynn Mazika.
Madam President, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. There are two items on the agenda that I would like to address. By far, the most important is the resolution advocating for full funding of the Fair School Funding Plan and preservation of local control. This is such a critical subject that I joined others in a rally outside the building this evening to show our support for the state to provide proper funding for public schools. We had more than 50 participants and tons of cars honking their horns in support. I am pleased to see the board take a position on this issue. Schools such as Mentor Schools should not be penalized for following sound fiscal practices by carefully looking to reduce costs where possible while still providing our kids the best education possible. Also, thank you, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, for the video providing transparency and information to all the district's residents. I urge you to pass this with a five-to-zero vote. My next topic is to express my pleasure that teachers and the board have been able to agree on a new teacher's contract. It has been done in a quiet, professional manner, with all parties understanding the needs of our school district. I find it a tribute to our fine teachers and our administration that the contract has been sent to you for approval. Again, I urge you to pass it with a five-to-zero vote. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's report and recommendations.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 7A1 and 7A2.
Still moved? Second?
Is there any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the following curriculum recommendations.
Would you like, are we doing all of these at once, one through seven, or are you?
Yeah, we're doing, we'll do those separate.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just for the curriculum recommendations first. So K-12 art, K-12 music at the high school level, math with the open up for algebra and geometry, and our English geometry, and our English journalism course.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the rental agreement with the city of Mentor.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Connecting Ed Professional Learning Contract.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Primary Service Agreement with the ESC of Northeast Ohio.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Abstain.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0 with one abstention. Yeah, I got you.
Good.
Yep.
And before I do this next one, because I know we had a question on this with the two different ESC contracts. Again, our primary service agreement is with the ESC of Northeast Ohio. That's where we get most of our services from. This one will be a recommendation for approval of the service agreement with the ESC of the Western Reserve. That one is with just some small service contracts that we work with regarding gifted and special education services.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the HPC Medicaid School Program three-year service agreement.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the NeoNet Service Provider Contract.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Securely Renewal Agreement.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel, and C2 through C5, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Said yes.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I am also recommending approval of Agenda Item D, a resolution accepting the negotiated agreement with Mentor Teachers Association.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to motion to postpone consideration until after July 1st, when the state budget's finalized and we'll have a complete picture of what we're dealing with. Right now, there are just too many unknowns for us to reasonably commit to a three-year contract. It is why originally we asked for an executive session. We asked, when this... We first found out it was going to be on the agenda, to pull it and have an executive session so we can meet and have discussions. But we were not afforded that opportunity. So here, you know, I just, I think, including this contract on the agenda while at the same time we're out having a protest and we're shouting "May Day, May Day!" on our social media with a picture of a schoolhouse on fire, whilst voting ready to approve a three-year contract is negligent, in my opinion. On the one hand, we're warning people to reach out to legislators to make sure that they know the damage this potential funding, these potential funding changes could cause, and then, you know, turning around and saying, "Let's rush this three-year contract with 3% raises for three years." So I just think that before we know what our funding is going to look like, we're sending a terribly mixed message to our taxpayers, and we can't have it both ways. So I just think the prudent thing to do would be to just wait. I'm not saying I have issues with the agreement as it is right now, but I just think, how can we accurately assess whether this contract is something that we can afford long-term if we don't know what our funding's going to look like?
I would second that motion. I won't go into everything just because I feel like Rose really hit on it. At our last executive session that we had, where we really only had one executive session where we had numbers presented, I did ask, like, "Hey, what are the next steps?", and I did request that we meet again before anything was brought to the table, specifically because of concerns like this. I agree that it's just mixed messaging. I think it's just poor timing. I mean, if we look at our agenda tonight, we have a resolution on there where we're saying we're going to lose millions and millions of dollars, but then we're giving 3% raises for the next three years. I think we need to wait until the budget is completely finalized so that we know what pot of money we're working with. That's just my two cents. I would really like to hold off until we know what that, what the budget is really going to look like. I have concerns about pushing this through, and then what if the budget really gets cut, and then down the road, we're looking at actual adjustments to teachers? And I don't think that would be a wise decision to do that.
So to be clear, the motion on the table is a motion to postpone until, really, any time after the budget. So I think our first meeting is not until the second Thursday of July, so we could even, as fast as Bill can take the budget when it's signed into law, and translate that for us. So, motion to postpone this contract until the state budget is finalized? Right, yes. Do I have a second for that?
Yes, Mrs. Payne seconded.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that?
I think what Mr. Wade presented to us thoroughly with...
Jenny, I can't hear you. Can you speak a little bit closer?
Sorry. Thanks. I think what Mr. Wade presented in our executive session was thorough. We gave him and Mr. Heath a clear support for the measures that they were going to be taking into consideration in the negotiations process. They did that in good faith. It has a positive impact on the five-year forecast. There's nothing certain about what the state chooses to do or not to do. To me, having this negotiation ratified, and there were a lot of concessions made on the part of the Teachers Association, I'm prepared to go forward. I don't think postponing makes any sense at all.
I have a question for Mr. Wade with this. Mr. Wade, does this contract create a financial situation for the district that is considerably better or worse than we were in the previous five-year plan?
All right, it would be better.
And, Mr. Wade, is a 3% increase out of line with the current contracts being negotiated?
No, the state average is 3% currently in SERB.
And, Mr. Wade, could you speak to the concession that was made by the elementary school staff and by the union that added an additional 15 minutes per day? So that's over 46 hours of elementary time in their, in their school year with, with no additional cost to us. What would the monetary value of that time be?
So the 15 minutes of additional instructional time, bringing up the instructional time at the elementary to, I believe, seven and a half hours, Mr. Heath correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
Was negotiated without an increase in pay as a result of that, or you can consider it as part of the bigger compensation package that we negotiated with MTA, which included other things that I'm happy to address as well. You know, we did talk about three, 3% raises. There was a change to the severance package where we increased the number of days that could be cashed out to 340 days to align with the MCE contract, as well as if they retire in the first year that they're eligible, they will get a 40% of that value, which will pay for itself when we hire new teachers at a lower rate. So the compensation that would be given does pay for itself. And then any years that they would have stayed otherwise, there's savings of approximately $55,000 to $60,000, depending upon the time that they retire for each year. So that severance piece allows us to return our staff kind of over, maybe quicker than we would have, so it has savings built in to the district. And then, obviously, the 15 minutes at no additional cost has a savings annually of about $400,000 to the district because there's no additional compensation for that. And the 3% add about $750,000 a year to the budget, per what we were budgeting in the November forecast. However, that's offset by huge concessions in healthcare where we were able to negotiate a spousal coordination of benefits in elimination of some prescription drugs that we no longer would have that we're estimating on the low end. Projections show it could be anywhere from 10 to 25% a year in annual savings. So when I do my projections, obviously, I project the worst on cost, and on savings, I project the least. So that way, when we look at our forecast, we kind of know worst-case scenario, and we're projecting about $2.8 million annually in savings because of the healthcare concessions. So when you look at the five-year forecast in comparison to where we were in November, with some assumptions, we're looking at savings somewhere in the range of, I believe I put it in my update, I've got to make sure I don't misquote this here. I have a lot of notes here, so bear with me. About $2.4 million better than we were projecting in November because of negotiations with MTA. And obviously, we are in the process of finalizing negotiations with MCE. We do have a TA with them as well. They have not voted on that yet, so that's why it's not presented, and so we can speak to that when that occurs.
Mr. Wade, when a tentative agreement is reached, what is customary for... Once a tentative agreement is reached, and the, you know, so meaning the union has voted that they are in support of the negotiations, what would be customary for our district with the timeline of approving the contract, so ratifying it at the board table?
Historically, for me, my experience is both as superintendent and CFO, when we get a tentative agreement, we provide a summary to the board of the major points, kind of the big picture of what was achieved and a financial impact. And then, once the TA is approved, the board typically has approved it at the next... I can't think of a time they didn't, so I'll say typically because, you know, I don't recall a time where it wasn't. But I choose that word carefully just for the simple fact that I can't speak to a time that I've been involved in a negotiation or wasn't approved at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Wade, could you outline the timeline of when the tentative agreement was approved, the board was notified? Speak a little bit to the contention that we did not have a second meeting, that I don't recall ever being asked for, and also, I mean, obviously, we were willing to go into executive session today, that the members that requested it declined, but can you speak to when we were notified of the tentative agreement and the opportunities that we had to ask questions?
So negotiation starts after the first of the year. Mr. Heath and I met with our district attorney. We've been planning for this. We had our first meeting, I believe, with the board at an executive session in February, at the end of February, to discuss kind of initial parameters and talking about that information as we were leading into our first round of negotiations in early March. After the March meeting, we kind of got pressed for time, I think, at that March meeting where I wanted to give the board an update on some stuff, but I think that meeting went long, so we had to postpone until after spring break, and then I was on vacation. So I think we met in early April to have a more concrete numerical discussion with the board to get some parameters to guide us into the discussion on finances, which for my world, obviously, is where the rubber really meets the road for me to be able to help negotiate a plan for the district. And then from there, we went in on April 3rd and had our second day of negotiations that went into the early evening. We finalized, I believe, in our Friday updates to the subsequent day, I believe it was the Friday after, Mr. Heath gave a overview of the main concepts and hit all the key points that had a financial impact. I had done an initial cursory financial review, but I wanted to check those numbers a little more detailed, and I put them in my April 11th update.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I have some follow-up questions.
Could we see if anyone else wants to speak first?
Yeah, I guess the only person would be more in this left because everybody else spoke, but go ahead if she's got something. Oh, I mean, I just wanted to add, I do agree with Ms. Jessling. I think that as a first-timer going through this process, I feel that it's been pretty above board. Mr. Wade, every, I mean, everything that he has shared sounds very familiar, the savings certainly, and indeed sounded even better than we expected. Both parties sounded satisfied, walked away from the table feeling there were wins and concessions, but I think that the district comes out, on the whole, in a pretty good place. I felt that the process was handled very diligently. I really don't have any concerns. Just, if it's okay, if I go back to the second round here. So a couple of questions. I know that we had, Mrs. Cook, you brought up the 3%, and if that is, you know, pretty much average for the SERB average, which is, you know, for other schools, right, in the state of Ohio specifically?
Public entities.
Okay.
But schools, obviously, are a part of that, yeah, just to be clear.
Do you know if these other schools also are deficit spending and have a failed levy?
I do not have that information handy in front of me, no.
And do you know if they are, if their, you know, teacher's average salary is the highest in their county, like ours?
I can't speak to that. All I can speak to is the actual average of the different entities that are negotiated through SERB contracts.
Okay. It's hard to compare apples to apples because it's not apples to apples unless we know for sure that they're in the same financial situation that we're in. So I understand, Mrs. Cook, your points, but I don't exactly agree with them. I know that in the executive session, you know, Rose and I did, we did have some concerns about the optics of how is this going to look? And I understand that there is a savings, and, Mr. Wade, I did talk to you, and I thought it was 1.2 million in actual amount of money over the next five years that we're saving. You said the green line, the other one was...
That would be potentially if the other contract is ratified and then brought forth to the board. So if we're looking at specifically what we're presenting today, it's a little bit more than that.
Okay, so that's with both of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then in year 2027, though, we would be in the negative, correct? We see an increase, savings in our bottom line for two years, and then 2027, I have in the chart that you gave me that we were spending.
2028. It's a little bit over.
Okay, let me look. I have, sorry, I have it here from the other day.
And it depends on, again, what chart you're looking at.
Got it. Okay, so this is just the MTA?
Correct.
We'll just stick to MTA.
Yeah, so we're a little bit, a little bit over, about $71,000 what we had budgeted
Got it, okay.
In November.
So we are, so there is a savings, and I can appreciate that absolutely, but then year 2028, we are spending more, 2029, we are spending more.
I would just caution that assumption because, again, the assumptions that we're looking at in the data that I presented is based on my assumptions where I've overstated probably potential risk costs and understated savings. Again, we can save anywhere from 10 to 25% on healthcare, and I assumed closer to 10%, just a little bit over, actually.
Okay, and I know one of the concessions were the weight loss drugs. Is that something that other schools offer? Is that pretty typical, that they're covering that?
Some do, some don't.
Okay, so it's kind of...
It's becoming more common now, is something that we're trying to, obviously, control cost on.
Sure.
I mean, I think it's an important point to bring up, and it was important for us to get that in negotiations. We saw a substantial increase, over almost a 200% increase in cost, just on those drugs alone.
Yeah.
So, you know, we needed to get those out because, you know, we're basing the savings on costs that occurred from 2024, and we're trending to be even higher this year. So those savings technically would be even more. to be even higher this year. So those savings technically would be even more.
And the figures that you gave us, all of this was not including the updated budget that the state is putting out there. This is what, based off of our November forecast with the figures, like today, not...
Correct, yeah. But I've run it, I've run it with our updated analysis in May. And obviously, I'm not presenting the May forecast tonight.
Yeah.
Because I didn't want to present a forecast that we'd have to change with the passing or not of the MTA contract. So I wanted to be able to provide the board an accurate one. So that's why I asked if I could have the ability to present that at the special meeting on the 29th.
I just, I caution us to go forward with this before we know exactly what kind of pot of money we're going to be looking at in July with the budget changes. I think it's, it's an unwise decision to agree to something when we don't know how much money we will have. While I do see the savings in the first several years, and I understand the concessions, you know as much as I do that I've been pushing for some healthcare concessions over the last couple of years. I was involved in the MTA agreement in my very first year, and I went along with everything as is. I learned some things from that, and that's why I had requested in the executive session that we meet again, because I still, as all of you know from the executive session, I was asking a lot of questions and, you know, wanting more information and worried about how this was going to look, especially given if we look at a levy. I just, I caution the rush. I would like to wait until the budget. Those are just my sentiments.
I'll just make a couple more points quickly. I think you're missing the point, because I hear you guys defending the agreement. And I'm not making a judgment if it's a good deal or a bad deal. My whole focus is, what does this look like to the community when we are shouting from the rooftops that we don't, we're not going to be funded properly to run the school, but we are going to quickly pass this three-year contract, this three-year commitment, before we know what our funding is. So that's all I'm asking. I'm not criticizing or the process. You know, I will say that in that executive session, we did suggest, you know, because of this budget, should we do a one-year? Should we do a freeze? Should we wait? And I was told, nope, that's never been done. That's never been done. And it was kind of passed on. So, and since there was, we're a minority here, that wasn't even considered. So I'm asking now, because I think, you know, yes, it's the savings in year one and two. We don't know what it's going to look like. We don't know what that budget is going to look like. And I just think it makes us, it sends a better message to the taxpayers, that we are being fiscally responsible, we're being good stewards of their tax dollars. And we, there's no rush, because the agreement, I think, starts August 1. So we can quickly, after we get the budget, figure some things out. And then it maybe just passes 5-0, and everything's great. But, you know, I think it just sends a better message to wait.
I disagree respectfully. We authorized, in executive session, we authorized our administrative team to bargain in good faith. And they did that. And they were bargaining, they were bargaining with our, with the authority that we gave them. And to question the authority we gave them now is surprising to me, that we would do that. And in addition, our, requesting a freeze is something, I think our teachers deserve a fair contract. I think all of our employees do. And I stand by that the idea of a freeze is not something that I could support.
Can I respond? Do you guys mind if I respond to your comments? Because I think it's, they're valid points. There's a couple of things I think I'd like to touch on. If we were adding money to the forecast, I would 100% agree with you. I would fully say that it's probably best to wait, because, you know, the deal that we're having is adding cost, and we don't know what our revenue is going to be. The fact that we've negotiated a contract that reduces the forecast by a amount currently at about $2.4 million, and then when we look at potential changes, that we can't get into too much detail up here at the table, and we've had that discussion, it'll be reduced potentially a little bit if that contract goes through. However, to stay status quo is going to be a loss to the district, which would further hinder our ability based on the potential revenue changes. And I guess, from my perspective, and I have a presentation on this tonight, so I don't want to get too into it, I am not screaming from, you know, to do that. I think it's, what I wanted to do is the concern that I have with the current model that's being funded is the potential cap. And I'll get into this much more in detail. And we can do that now, or we can wait till then. You know, I want to make sure you guys have your questions answered, because I think they're legitimate, is the fact that that's something that's never happened before. The Fair School Funding Plan to us, we always kind of, and we said this when we met with the legislators individually, and both, when we went down, went down in April, we went down to the breakfast, and we met with Senator Serino and a few others. You know, just leave us alone when it comes to that, you know. And I think, from that standpoint, the impact on us with the Fair School Funding Plan is minimal. Obviously, I have a belief that there's a need for a Fair School Funding Plan, but we're on the guarantee currently. And even a change of the guarantee obviously would hurt us. And again, I have data and explanations on that, and we can go into that in more detail. But the reality is, is the current negotiated agreement puts us in a better financial spot. To not pass it, or to even do a one-year where we do what we had budgeted, or even a zero, puts us in a worse spot. Because even if we had freezes, the loss of the savings from, with regards to the spousal coordination of benefits and the exclusion of the GLP-1s supersedes that. And then that could have potential long-term impacts as well. So I appreciate where you're coming from, and I get that. And I took that in consideration, and I've modeled that to make sure that we're, you know, that we know where we would be to do that. I wouldn't bring something, I hope you know, all of you know, that I didn't think was in the best interest of the district from a financial standpoint. That being said as well, I am happy, and I have made note, based on discussions that we have, that anytime we negotiate into the future, we will have a meeting prior to the meeting to review that in detail, if that's what the board wishes. I apologize that we didn't do that. I don't recall that from the conversation. It is not a practice that I've incurred in the past. But again, my job is to make sure that you are informed and have the information that you need to best meet the decisions that you have of a board to build a vote on.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, so we have a motion on the table to postpone, postpone voting on this contract until the state budget is finished. And we have a motion and a second, so please call the roll for this motion.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
No.
Ms. Marchaza?
No.
Ms. Cook?
No.
Motion fails 2-3.
Going back to our original motion for the resolution accepting the negotiated agreement with Mentor Teachers Association, is there any additional discussion?
I had just a couple other points, just because Maggie, you did say we gave authority. I do remember in that meeting, just to clarify, that I did have concerns. I understand the majority was very vocal in wanting to move forward with everything. But I do think Rose and I did explain that we had, we still had some concerns, which is why I asked for that meeting. I also do have concerns about us putting out a video. I know, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, you guys put out that video, and it did talk about increasing class sizes and removing, you know, electives or extracurriculars, insinuated those things. And it didn't talk at all about, you know, our admin cost increasing over the last five years while we've lost, you know, almost 1,000 students. I have a hard time passing something like this when we're using those kind of tactics, which, no offense, respectfully, I believe are scare tactics, because I would never want to touch the certified staff if our, we needed to make budget cuts. I think we've got other areas in the admin that would need to be looked at first. And I do have concerns about down the road, what is all this going to look like with the budget. So those are just my concerns. That's it.
I agree. I actually, after the video went on, I got more responses about, like, they're going to reduce teachers and class sizes and, you know, all the scare stuff. And so, talking to people off the ledge. So we have to just be careful about that, because I 100% don't support reducing teachers in any way. And that's my fear, is that we have two good years, and then what if the levy fails, and then we're looking at staff reduction. So I'll just say it again, without clarity on future funding, committing these high raises over multiple years carries real risk. And postponing would have been, you know, more fiscally responsible path. I respect that that motion failed. We have a duty up here to balance fair compensation with long-term sustainability, and that requires complete reliable financial data before entering binding agreements. And I just feel like we are rushing this when we don't need to. So I just want to make that clear.
Any additional discussion?
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
No.
Ms. Payne?
No.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-2.
I'm also recommending approval of Agenda Item E related to reduction in force.
So moved, second.
Is there any discussion?
Was that Ms. Jessling?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
And prior to my final recommendation here this evening, because these are our two new administrative team members, we are very excited to recommend Anna Pavco as the new principal at Hopkins Elementary School, and Tony White as the new principal at Bellflower. Tony is coming to us from Cleveland Heights, where she is currently a sitting principal. And Anna is joining us from Shore Middle School, where she is currently an assistant principal. And very excited to recommend these two to you this evening. So I'm also recommending approval of Agenda Item F related to administrative staff recommendations.
So moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Next, we have the Board of Education report and recommendations. The first item under Board Business is the second reading and approval of the Mentor Board of Education NEOLAs policies.
And one quick adjustment before we get into that vote. One of the policies, Policy 2266 around non-discrimination, there's one adjustment that we will be making, and that is to remove the parenthetical phrase, "including sexual orientation and gender identity." That's in the first paragraph of the policy. That's been recommended to be taken out based on, and it should have been taken out earlier based on our cleanup of our language, and to make sure that we align with current Ohio Revised Code 331909 and our other board policies, where we did similar adjustments here earlier this year in 226002 and 7421. So that part will be coming out in the final version of that language. The second part, we did have a question regarding, I believe it's on the second page of the document, where we talk about the definitions of consent and incapacitated. And it was recommended, and this was in the previous language already, but just as a point of clarification, those were taken out because we do not want to create a definition for these terms via policy where there's no legal support for that stated definition. So just wanted to make sure we clarified that before we voted on those policies here this evening.
Thank you. We'll go through each of them individually? Okay, so...
I think we're voting on them as all as one.
Oh.
Unless the board...
No, I'm fine with that.
Do we need a...
A motion in a second?
Well, yeah.
That we do?
I, well, how, what do we, I have...
Would you like to vote on them together, or separately?
No, I mean, do we need a motion to even, to be...
To make the language adjustment.
Yeah. So, I'll motion.
We can.
I have a change on one of them, so I don't know.
Let's just do them individually.
Let's go them individually. All right, we're going to consider Policy 1230, which is responsibilities of the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second?
One second.
Mrs...
How many total are there?
There are four.
Three.
1230, 2266, and 5780.1.
All right, so that was moved by Ms. Payne and seconded by who?
Ms. Jessling.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve Policy 1230, responsibilities of the superintendent?
Yeah. Mrs. Payne, I think we had, did that, Ms. Jessling, yeah.
Is there any discussion?
Sorry, I'm going to screw up.
I just wanted, I just have something real quick. I'm glad that we had that language added in there. I know we had some concern from the community about the executive orders. And so I had requested, I think with Rose, putting some verbiage in there. And I think we had a majority that supported that, so I'm glad to see that change. I think it sends a good message to the community.
Is there any more discussion?
Nope.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Do I have a motion to approve Policy 2266, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities?
As amended.
As amended.
So moved, second?
Is there any discussion?
Just want to say thank you, Mr. Heath. I know I was somebody who contacted you about that language and not matching with ORC or with our previously passed policy, and you acted very quickly. So thank you.
Rook?
Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Policy 5780.1, the Parents' Bill of Rights, do I have a motion?
So moved?
I'll second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I just want to say I'm relieved that this sexual content policy that was previously presented by Mrs. Payne and then was removed is now being reinstated through this policy, along with the reversal of prior board decisions to retain certain contested looks, which are now being removed. So having said that, I do want a motion to change under Letter C, under sexuality content, where it says incidental references to sexual concepts or gender ideology occurring outside of formal instruction or presentations on such topics, including references made during class participation and in schoolwork, to then add at the end of that sentence, "by students."
I would second that. I think that gives more clarification to that, to Number C.
So we have a motion to add, under the...
Thank you.
...definition of sexuality content, that sexuality content does not mean incidental references to sexual concepts, and in C, adding the words "by student."
Yes.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
I just want to back off of Rose here. The reason, I think, that we're asking for "by students" is just because I think it just clarifies it. Students may bring up that kind of reference. And if teachers would, then there would be an issue. So that kind of just clarifies and makes a differentiation between the two.
The only concern that I have with this is that this is taken right from the law. So changing that wording, I'm not necessarily comfortable with, because it was written that way for purpose by a lawyer.
I'm inclined to agree. This was, Mr. Heath, I think you'd said verbatim from the law. I don't think we should deviate from that. I think that's all the clarity we need.
Do we know that for sure, that this is exactly from word for word?
Well, we should be able to look it up. Can you give me the Ohio Revised Code?
I don't know that it was, I guess I shouldn't say verbatim for sure, Mr. Heath can confirm. But my impression was, what you had told us was, the language was from the law. It was reviewed by our legal team and approved by them. I think that we should stick with it.
Well, we know that the intent of this law is to make sure that, you know, parents don't have to worry that some of these conversations that are considered controversial are going to be had. And so, but obviously, we have to protect our teachers, too, because if these conversations pop up and it's reported, it's important to note that, you know, if it's brought up, they may be brought up, as long as they're brought up by students and not by staff. So I feel like this is, in a way, protects the teacher as well.
I just pulled it up. I just pulled it up and it does say it is under C under Ohio Revised Code. So, yeah, so incidental references to sexual concepts or gender ideology occurring outside of formal instruction or presentations on such topics, including references made during class participation and in schoolwork. So I will withdraw my second because I think that makes sense for it to align with exactly what Ohio Revised Code says. Okay?
Okay.
I was agreeing under the, understanding that it wasn't actually verbatim, so.
Yeah, I understand the proposal makes sense. I just do want to stay consistent as well. We still have the motion to approve the Parents' Bill of Rights. Is there any other discussion?
So we're adding the?
We are not adding.
We're not adding it.
No, Mrs. Payne withdrew her.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Do we just have discussion on the actual?
Yes, discussion on.
I just want to ask, I know specifically we've had questions, Craig, I've been asking you these questions probably for the last few months about these books, the K-5 Book Collection and the library books that have been challenged that include those topics, such as the book that was challenged last year that included topics about transgender, a transgender child, and that was available in K-5 libraries. Is that book and the other books will be removed then per this policy?
They'll have to go through the process again because that's part of the policy itself. So those would have to go through the complaint process with the principal, then come to me, then come to the board.
So there's no proactive approach on that, that we would be proactively removing them? Because couldn't a parent, if they take that book home and it says, you know, it's all about transgender activism, wouldn't that violate the law?
Those things that are in the curriculum, yes. I think some of the other things that you're referring to are in different library collections. So that would have to go through the process.
So you're talking about?
Anything that's in our curriculum would be proactively removed.
Okay, curriculum as in the K-5 Book Collection Collaborative Classrooms, that was actually deemed curriculum. Those books, like Heather Has Two Mommies, A Boy Named Queen.
Those would go through the process though because those aren't curricular items. Those are the supplemental pieces that are in the classroom libraries.
But when we approved of them, it was under curriculum and we had to approve them because it was part of the Collaborative Classrooms K-5 Book Collection. It was deemed curriculum.
Because they're not directly instructed on those, they're not the curricular materials that are being taught on a daily basis and then on a yearly basis in the classroom.
Is that?
So that's the, it's a subtle difference, but that's part of the guidance that we've been receiving thus far.
From legal.
But the, one thing that I will say from a proactive standpoint is we're continuing to go through the weeding process in our, in our school libraries and I know the list of books that was shared with me previously, there were several that were on that list that potentially could be weeded out at the end of this school year as well. So those will be proactively done as part of our weeding process. And I can probably give the board updates as to where we sit with some of those here as we move through that process here in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. I remember when we approved the Collaborative Classroom that Mr. Porter was clear with us at the time that it wasn't curriculum material but supplemental material and it didn't typically go through the process that it did, but out of an abundance of caution and transparency was when he laid it out for the public to review. But normally with supplemental materials, that wasn't something that was in place at that time. And that was done because he want, because he knew that the community desired that and the board supported that. So I think that that might have caused some confusion of them being curricular, but they are not curricular books, they're supplemental.
It was on our agenda as curriculum to approve. We don't have to approve supplemental materials. So, and the only reason why the process changed was because there was a book called George, which was about a boy trying to be a female and it was supposed to be placed in all fifth grade classrooms. And on our website, it said in, under curriculum and then curriculum proposals, it had the K-5 Collaborative Classrooms proposal on there, but nobody knew it was there. And so then when it was time for us to vote on it, I did tell people about that book because it was on the agenda and we did have a lot of pushback from the community. I brought it to Bill Porter, Mr. Porter, and he did, you know, the book did end up being removed. But because of that, I recommended a different process to include parents and I have emails to back all this up. So if anybody wants them, I'll be happy to send them to you. But that conversation is why we have a different process. That's why I recommended the curriculum liaison position, which we now have. But it was curriculum and if you go back to board docs, you could see that it was curriculum.
Just a point of clarification, we never voted on George because George was never in that list. It was removed before it even came to, to that group. There were other books that you were uncomfortable with, but that book was pulled out by the board before it ever hit the opportunity for us to purchase that. We never brought that book to the table.
Right, it never made it to the table because I did express my concerns with Bill. However, it was on the website under curriculum, curriculum proposals and so folks were able to go in, they just didn't know they were able to go in until I told them. And then that book was on the book list that was there for people to see, which I also received as well. It was the IDR book list, which I still have, and it did include George. Once it was brought to Bill Porter's attention, there was a couple other books as well that were brought to his attention. They decided to retain those, but George was removed. So, I remember this very clearly because I was the one who brought it up.
Yes, I, I do too. So just as a point of clarification, George was never on our list to approve at the table because it was removed by the entire board unanimously before we brought it to the table.
The book list was postponed because George was on it and they needed more time to review the books that I had brought to their attention.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question. Craig, what would the administrative guidelines look like for the changes in how counselors, the non-licensed counselors can conduct sit downs with students now? Is there something, you know, because it's from what I understand from this law that, you know, they have to be very careful, there's been changes in how they can conduct those sit downs?
Yeah, and obviously we'll be reviewing that throughout the summer and have some guidelines in place. This policy doesn't currently have the administrative guideline attached to it yet. We wait for the approval first and then we'll, we'll start working through what that procedure's going to look like. I can share with you though that we've had some initial conversations with MTA just to make sure that they're aware of what is included in this. We've shared the document with the proposed language for the, for this bill coming out of the Parents' Bill of Rights and, and our counseling staff obviously is the most impacted as you look through the bill itself.
And then are supplemental materials, so like these books you're talking about, included in the Parents' right to review?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Next, we have the approval of the resolution advocating for full funding of the Fair School Funding Plan and preservation of local control. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just, if I could say a few words, I know this is the resolution that I introduced, so I feel like I made my case last time we spoke about it. I'll just reiterate though that I do believe the Fair School Funding Plan is the best way forward to fund our public schools. It was clear in 2021 that, you know, based on the bipartisan support it received, a lot of other folks felt so too. I understand, Mr. Wade, that it has a somewhat minimal impact on mentor schools, but I think the broader impact of all public school districts is immense and needs to be considered. The Fair School Funding Plan provides consistency and predictability and stability to all Ohio school districts. We ought to hold those lawmakers accountable for the promises they made to those public school districts and to all of the public school children across Ohio. It is transparent, it is equitable, it's based on a sustainable formula that is based on the actual cost of educating a student. It gives us assurance that the state will fulfill its constitutional obligation to provide that fair share of funding and to do their part rather than passing it on to our taxpayers. It's a predictable funding model, which gives Mr. Wade here a lot of security going forward as he plans his five-year forecasts and helps us govern better as well. So I'll reiterate how important the elimination of that 30% cap, I know Mr. Wade has some feelings about this as well. Before I toss it over his way, I want to say that this, this is a big deal. More than $11 million loss and in more or less an immediate loss will have an absolutely catastrophic impact on our district and it uniformly so across the state. So elimination of this cap is extremely important. And I think that, you know, support across the board for this resolution is vital. It says to our community that we're speaking in a unified voice, that we are public school board members supporting public school funding. I want to take a moment though to show some gratitude. I know many of us submitted testimony to the Senate Education, excuse me, yeah, Education Committee, that's where it is right now. So thank you to everyone who did that and especially thank you to Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade who have been doing double time right now, trying to help the community understand all of the ins and outs of what this proposed budget would mean to mentor schools. So thank you to you both for all the work you're doing on that front. So I think I'll pause there.
I just want to, I guess I have some points I want to make as well. I'm glad to see that the cap is included in this because the resolution last month, I had brought up how it actually didn't speak to the cap at all. It was from Honesty for Ohio Education, which is a political, very left-leaning group. So I'm glad to see that our, our attorney, I'm assuming, looked this over and reviewed it and then did include the cap that I had mentioned at the last meeting. I do see issues with the cap. I don't think we're in charge of all public schools or advocating on behalf of all public schools. I definitely think we are, you know, trying to advocate for mentor, which some of the language in here, like it says, whereas nearly 90% of Ohio school age children, in our school it's 85% that attend the public schools, there are some issues that I see in this resolution that don't exactly speak to my testimony and I could share my testimony just so everybody knows I did submit it. I'm happy to read it. I submitted it, I think Rose submitted hers after and then a few days later I saw Mrs. Cook and then I also saw Ms. Marchaza as well. So I'm glad to see that we submitted them. I think the time to submit testimony ended today at 9:00 AM, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I'm not really sure what this resolution as a whole with the board would do. I did propose a resolution in the past and I was told that, you know, the resolutions really don't do anything. So in this particular situation, I think my written testimony speaks to more of how I feel about the cap and the Fair School Funding Plan. And I'll just read it real quick. It's not super long and then I'll just let you know what my other concerns were. So I just wrote in to the Chair and the Vice Chair and the members of the Senate Education Committee and I just said, "I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the potential cap being placed on K-12 school funding in Ohio as well as the timing of anticipated reductions to the Fair School Funding Plan. While I understand the intent behind establishing financial limits, I worry that such measures may lead to unintended consequences ultimately resulting in more frivolous spending rather than meaningful financial stewardship. Instead of returning unallocated funds to taxpayers, I do fear that schools may simply redirect these resources towards non-essential expenditures, avoiding necessary long-term planning. Without the ability to earmark funds for permanent improvements and future revenue needs, schools may find themselves in a position where they must continually increase expenditures placing additional levies on the ballot. This cycle could lead to voter fatigue, making it increasingly difficult to secure the funding needed for essential educational priorities. Additionally, the timing of the reductions to the Fair School Funding Plan presents an immediate challenge. Implementing substantial funding cuts so close to the start of the school year could leave schools scrambling to adjust their budgets and reconsider financial commitments they've already anticipated. Significant funding changes should be planned with a future implementation year to provide districts with sufficient time to reevaluate their financial strategies without compromising essential programs and services. As both a home educator and a public school board member, I am a strong advocate for school choice and ensuring that students have access to a range of educational opportunities. However, it's very important that any funding cap incorporates clear provisions for future expenditures, allowing schools to remain fully funded and continue making lasting improvements. Without these safeguards, there's a risk that funds would be allocated to non-essential items rather than being returned to taxpayers and ultimately undermining the intended purpose of the cap. I hope the committee carefully considers these challenges and works towards solutions that ensure the financial stability of our schools. I trust that the committee will take necessary steps to balance long-term improvements with fiscal responsibility and I look forward to seeing the recommendations that emerge from these discussions and how they will support both educational excellence and prudent financial decision-making." So that's my full opinion. I have an issue with the cap, which is why I mentioned it last month. I think the 30% cap without provisions is definitely a problem for public schools and I don't want to see it as it is currently written. I would be open to a higher cap. I know, Mr. Wade, you said if it was increased to 50%, let's say, then we wouldn't have an issue, right?
Not an immediate issue, yeah.
Yeah, and then also I would like to see provisions if they are going to keep the cap, which is not mentioned in the resolution. If they're going to keep the cap, let's say worst-case scenario they keep it, then I would like to at least see provisions for us to kind of earmark funds to make sure that we can, you know, plan for the future. Also take issue in the resolution with the, where it says, whereas the proposed budget would underfund the Mentor Exempted Village District by $560,284 over the next two years, I think that's deceiving because what I received and what I talked about with Mr. Wade was the November forecast, which Mr. Wade provides us because those are his anticipated, I guess, forecast for.
Yeah, assumptions, yeah.
Yeah, assumptions and that did not include any assumption that we would be fully funded. We were not under the assumption that we would be getting the money that is stated in here. If we go to his November forecast and compare it with the state budget, the proposed budget for House Bill 96, it's really more of only $60,000 of a difference. We actually get a little bit more, I mean, a couple thousand dollars in the first year and then we're out about 60 in the second year, correct?
Yeah, I think, yes.
Okay, so I, I don't like.
So the net's about 55,000 to 57,000, depending upon what my assumptions are, yes.
So I don't like the 560,000 in there. I think it's deceiving. I don't think it's 100% honest. While I understand if we were fully funded and if we anticipated that amount, but we didn't anticipate that amount. So I would like to see that out of the resolution. I'm trying to think if there's anything else, let's see. That's pretty much it. I know I submitted my testimony, I submitted on time so that they received it. I'm not quite sure what this would, this resolution, if we all passed it, would really accomplish that hasn't already been accomplished with all of our testimonies. I think Ginny was the only one who didn't supply that testimony, so.
I already spoke once, so if you'd like to speak.
Okay, so I submitted also, she said, opponent testimony to the Senate Education Committee expressing the need to fully phase in the Fair School Funding. I think we're on the same page there. I expressed that implementing substantial cuts without appropriate notice causes districts to scramble to adjust their budgets and reconsider financial commitments that they had already anticipated. Where my opponent testimony differs from this resolution is how I feel about the cap. I submitted that while I agree that we need immediate property tax relief, I fear the 30% cap as written without provisions may create an us-versus-them dynamic between taxpayers and our district. Even without the changes in funding, our district is in a tough spot after a failed levy in 2023 and will be relying heavily on taxpayer support for an upcoming levy in the very near future. It's critical that any funding cap percentage be increased and budget reductions include clear provisions for future expenditures, ensuring that schools remain fully funded and able to support lasting improvement. So in short, you know, I can't, I would be, it, it would, I'm, it can. So in short, you know, I can't, I would be, it conflicting, this resolution and my testimony, there's a conflict there. So while I think we were on the same page in general that we need more funding, I can't support that because it's the opposite of what, it's very different than what I submitted. I think the cap's appropriate as long as it includes those provisions for facility improvements that are planned in advance and adding, and capital improvements as well. So I think it's important, too, that, you know, while I might not be able to support this specific resolution, I have, I have had several opportunities to advocate to our legislators on this issue. I arranged multiple sit-down face-to-faces with Senator Serino. Mrs. Payne arranged a meeting with Senator Cutrona, who's on the Senate Education Committee. Many of us sat in numerous meetings up here and had phone calls, emails to our legislators. I have had the ear of the Chair of the Senate Finance Committee more times than I can count, both in person and on the phone. He's probably sick of me. I have submitted, like I said, opponent testimony and directed concern parents and citizens to do the same. I think that a comment was made earlier by a constituent that Senator Serino, I think it was said, didn't, doesn't have time or doesn't think it's worth his time to sit down with people and I, that couldn't be further from the truth. Last week, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade sat down with Senator Serino and, you know, he is well aware of where we stand. So the email blast that went out to, that you submitted, that you're to the Finance Committee and the Senate Education Committee, also is expressing where we stand. So I think that while this, I think that there's been an unprecedented amount of advocating going on here and everyone at this table agrees, but I don't, I just, I don't think that at this point, the resolution is going to move the needle. I just think that we've all done a great job of advocating for our district and some of us might veer a little bit different in how that looks, but I think that the sentiment of the resolution makes sense and I respect that, but again, supporting that then would conflict, it conflicts with my testimony, so.
I would like to state that I wholeheartedly support this resolution, but I also really respect the expertise of Mr. Wade. And Mr. Wade has prepared a presentation on just this thing, so I would like to hear his take and how it would impact our district at this time if we could do that.
Got to get used to this setup. Low brow.
If we only had a place.
Paradigm would be great.
A large screen.
So what I wanted to do, I've been asked a number of times by many board members and community members, what does this look like to us? And, you know, I think it's, this is part of a process. So the whole point of what I shared with Mr. Heath was just to communicate to the community kind of where we're at, and this is pretty typical. I mean, there's nothing really atypical about the process that we're going through except for the fact that they are, they always look at each biennium, how they're going to fund education in Ohio. And typically that revolves around lately, the last two bienniums, the Fair School Funding Plan, which was instituted back in 2022, as Ms. Marchaza said, through a bipartisan effort that was fully supported by the Governor and the House and Senate on both sides of the aisle. With that, obviously, there's budget constraints. The last biennium, they reduced over $2 billion in income tax revenue, which has caused them to have constraints on what they can afford, which as a role of a treasurer, I can appreciate that, right? There's only so much money to be able to go around and how they're going to do that. But the biggest difference is now they're trying to look at how we collect locally, the local control, the levies that we've already approved, which is the cap that we've all been referring to, which is atypical. So when we talk about concern, that would be where my biggest concern comes through. But I do have a concern in general. So just to kind of lay the foundation, the Governor's model, he produced, was the continuation of the Fair School Funding Plan, but he froze the base costs at the 2022 level. Obviously, since 2022, we've seen some atypically high inflationary increases. But what has also happened during that time is we've seen increases in people's income as well as their property values. So a formula that's based on basically three prongs. When you only update the income and property tax piece, but you don't update the costs that associated with that on the cost of education, you get an imbalance, which, why is that important to the people in this room? Is because it makes us seem wealthier than we really are and we're not being compensated by the state as appropriately as we should be, which pushes the burden more so on the local taxpayer because they receive less state funding. The other area that was of concern in the Governor's model is he proposed a 5% or 10% reduction in the funding guarantees. We are what's considered a guaranteed district, which goes back to how we were funded back in 2020 and 2021. If the Fair School Funding Plan was fully phased in and there were no guarantees, we would actually receive less money. We receive anywhere, depending upon the year and the projections, four and a half to six and a half million dollars in guaranteed money. That brings us back up to what we were back in 2020 and 2021. The House then took, the next phase of that is, is the House then looks at it, they have a whole bunch of testimony, they go through it and they review it. They then presented their House Bill, House Bill 96. In House Bill 96, what we saw is the removal of the Fair School Funding Plan. They have actually suspended it, said the Department of Education and workforce is not allowed to pay on that model. And what they did is they created a new temporary foundation funding, which to, for us and many districts, doesn't fall below what they had in FY '25, so this current year. So again, it's another guarantee because your guarantee does not fall below. And then what they do, if your district has enrollment growth, because many of the districts across the state, including ours, as we've talked about historically, are seeing a decline in enrollment. But if you do have a growth, there's a calculation that would allow for potential additional funding there, which does not impact us. Where we would see growth would be on the fact that there would be an increase of $20 per student in 2026 and $30 per student in 2027. This is reminiscent of kind of life before the Fair School Funding Plan, is there's just these arbitrary random amounts. Sometimes it's 150, sometimes it was $10, sometimes it was zero. So from the Fair School Funding piece, the beauty of that model is it actually determines a cost and what it costs to educate a student in the state of Ohio. So for them to get rid of that would be concerning. I understand if they have to freeze it, but my argument that I presented to Senator Serino, who was so gracious to come in and speak to us, was if we're going to do that, we get that as treasurers and superintendents, that there's a limited amount of money, let's freeze it at the same level. So if we're going to use 2022 base costs because that's what you can afford, we should roll back the valuations and income factors to 2022 as well so that we're doing it on a consistent basis. So again, we're not looking, we're not not understanding what the legislature is going through because we have these same discussions here, right? It's working with them to provide solutions. Again, and then the other piece that was really most concerning to us was the 30% cap, which is you can't have a cash balance that exceeds 30% of your prior year's expenditures. We understand that they are seeing higher-than-usual cash balances across the state and we understand that property valuation has gone up at an atypical amount over the last few years because of COVID and what has happened with the economy. But we also know that that is going to return to normal and out of the time that this has existed with regards to how we do House Bill 920 and valuations, this is really the first anomaly that we've seen with this. And I think we all would agree COVID and what happened during that time and after was an anomaly. It's not something that we have seen on a regular basis. So we believe that the market will correct itself. So to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, with regards to how we are looking at property taxes as a whole, maybe not necessarily appropriate, but what we would agree with is that there needs potentially to be a deeper look with how we fund schools and how we fund municipalities because we're not the only ones who get benefit from property tax. We do get the most because of the way that the state law is written. On average, in our district, between 50 to maybe low 60% of your property tax comes back to us as a school district because of the way that we're funded and because we're considered a wealthy district and get very little school funding, more of that falls on the burden of the local taxpayer. So just as a quick overview, if you aren't aware, I'm not going to spend a lot of time explaining this. The Fair School Funding is made up of what it costs to educate a student. It includes the direct classroom instruction, it includes the instructional and student support, it includes building leadership and operations as well as district leadership and accountability. So most of it goes to what directly impacts student learning and the former personnel and there's non-personnel classes in the gray on the right. So what they do is they use the average cost across the state from 2022 to figure out what those components are and then they come up with a value. What happens then for mentor is that 90% of that amount falls on the local taxpayer with 10% being compensated from the state. The reason why we're at 10% is because that's the minimum. You can't fall below a 10% funding for the state. So for us, that equates to about $816 per student that we get from the state when it comes to the Fair School Funding. That doesn't include reimbursements on the home sit and rollback and it doesn't include any of the categorical aid that we get for preschool, gifted, special education and special transportation. So I'm a numbers guy, most of you are not, so you're visual. So what I have here in front of us is a graph that has multiple lines. The blue line is my draft version of our May update. We have worked very hard, as you guys have known who come on a regular basis, to make substantial cuts to the budget over the next few years. Mr. Heath has made some reductions and I'll get more into this in May. It includes the assumptions for both tentative agreements in the blue line, so that kind of puts us in a better place. The light gray line, which is that third line, is where we were in November. So you can see that that line falls where we had a negative cash balance in the last year of the forecast. We're projecting in May, and that assumes the state funding kind of has no increase at all, but it also assumes no real reduction because again, no laws have been passed. All we have is speculation at this point because it's all going through the process. The gray line, the second line, the dark gray line, is the Governor's model. So that includes the reduction of about $2 million in guarantee funding that we would see. So you see that that kind of takes away from our savings a little bit. And then you see the black and the red lines, that's what House Bill 96 represent. The reason why there's two lines is because what we do know for sure is that if the cap exists, we would lose, and I told, and we've heard the number $11.1 million thrown around a couple of times tonight, and that was accurate as of May 2nd or 3rd. You'll see my report, that would actually probably be a little bit closer to $12 million because we're a little bit better off than we thought at the end of April. So after 10 months of our fiscal year, we're doing better than we projected with revenue and our expenses are down a little bit more. And obviously, that number's not going to be finalized until we close out the fiscal year. We're not going to know exactly where we're going to stand to lose cash balance-wise until the fiscal year is done and we know exactly what we spent for the year. And that's true of a lot of these numbers. You know, the number $560,000 that we have projected in the resolution, and I've had this discussion with board members as well, is, it's an estimate. You know, it depends upon what assumptions are made as well and it actually is probably, potentially could be a little bit higher, but I didn't include special education, transportation because I wasn't thinking to include that in the funding piece. But when you look at House Bill 96, to Ms. Payne's point, and you compare it to the November forecast, there's not really a substantial difference. It's about $55,000 less revenue that we would receive from the state from the Fair School Funding Plan based on what it would be when it's not even really the Fair School Funding Plan more, as I said. The kicker, though, for us in this district of our size is we have done a lot to keep reducing our budget since 2016 and 2024. And we've saved that money to stretch the need for an additional levy. We've had discussions, I think, since Ms. Payne and Ms. Cook and been on the board and I got hired right before then, how do we continue to cut back and make reductions so that we can stretch that out so that we don't have to ask? We're even talking about as of recently, do we want to put it on in '25 or '26? Well, let's make cuts so we can stretch that out and that may come out from underneath us and we would lose that revenue, which is a little disconcerting because we've been trying to make those savings for a purpose of stretching out the levy cycle. So this is just the graph that kind of shows that. It would be a reduction of about 4.07 mils. So that's when Mr. Lima spoke to his savings, you know, that he figured that out based on the 4.07 mils and it's about $140-some dollars a month, or a year, excuse me, per $100,000. So your value you would get back. But it would cause the district to lose a number of days of cash on hand and, you know, we all have a policy, if you come to the meetings regularly, we would go from 148 days of cash on hand down to 114 and we'd actually be at a negative 17 by the end of the forecast because of that loss. And that's why you saw on this graph, the red and black lines falling below. The difference between the red and the black line, if you're wondering, is the assumption that I made and the reason why the red line assume is down a little bit further and it's more negative is because if the, there's no clarification on any of these calculations because it's not law yet, right? So we don't know exactly how they're doing it, so we're trying to read the tea leaves, so to speak. But it assumes in the red line that the Governor's reduction of the guarantee would come into play, so we'd be losing $1.3 million a year for a reduction in that guarantee. So that's why it drops down a little bit more. So why do we have cash balances or how does that exist? Well, we know we have increasing expenses and we know we have flat revenues, right? Our revenues don't really change. We don't see a growth on revenue unless we have a tax that's passed and the voters approve that. So the dotted line kind of represents our revenues, it's just a model to show you. And then where you see the blue line or the arrows pointing down at the red line, those areas that have white space between the blue line and the red line is the area where we're building up our cash reserve because that means our revenues are exceeding our expenses and we do that intentionally because we know at some point, our expenses are going to exceed our revenues. So the lines pointing, arrows pointing up, those areas are the areas that we're deficit spending as we were projected to do this year, and you'll see a little bit later that we're not actually going to deficit spend this year. But that brings that cash balance down. And then we, at some point, will have to potentially continue to either make reductions and we talk about that all the time. You hear me say the word flattening the curve, that would be pushing that red line down so that we can stretch that levy cycle. Or we have to seek additional revenue and that's what it shows when the line goes up and then our revenues remain relatively flat. Again, because we don't see much of an increase, even with the 25% valuation increase that we saw, we didn't see a huge increase in revenue for the district because our district is not on the floor and our voters are protected by House Bill 920. So just as a reminder, we need a cash balance because we don't know when things are going to change, right? If the state changes their funding model or we have an issue with a roof, as much as we try to have those plans, sometimes those things come up, as you all know. A boiler breaks and we got to spend $500,000 that we didn't plan. Also, if you're unaware, our cash flow changes throughout the year. In the summer, in August, when we get our tax bill, our cash flow is high. By the time we get to January, it's really low. And there are districts, not ours, because again, we have a pretty, we still have a decent cash balance, who can't make payroll in January or February before they get their second tax payment because they don't have the cash there to do it. Again, because we don't have cash coming in on a constant basis. Our money comes in twice a year. So we kind of got to ride that lull and the way that we do it is we bring money back from our investments or take money out of our savings account that we have, that have some low interest that we're getting from those as well, as we've talked about. Again, just to remind our taxpayers and our board, we're the third lowest taxed school district in the county. That's sometimes a surprise to people. If you're not a common person who shows up to our meetings, you may not know that. The only districts that tax less than us are Madison and Perry. And Perry has the nuclear power plant and they've never passed a levy in their life. So must be nice to be Perry.
1987, I worked on that campaign. Thank you.
1987.
In 1987, I was nine. Thank you.
I was 17.
That being said, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Senator Serino for making the time to come in and meet with us. I would actually disagree with the comments that were made earlier that he has not been listening to us. Mr. Heath and I have spoken to him a number of times. Mr. Heath and I have spoken to him a number of times and he has been receptive to those conversations. We organized a meeting with all the school districts in District 18 last Friday and he graciously showed up to that meeting and heard us out and kind of updated us. And I, you know, one of the things that I got out of that meeting was, and it makes sense and I knew that, but you know, they didn't create House Bill 96 in the Senate. They were given that. So the Senate right now had nothing to do with what we're dealing with on the screen. And we were just sharing with Senator Serino, this is how it impacts our districts and your district. Because we, he represents us as well. And we got some positive feedback from him that, you know, we left, I think, having a better understanding of maybe where the Senate's going. I think, you know, they understand that a 30% cap isn't really ideal. It doesn't really have any, it doesn't make sense and there's lots of things wrong with it. But they're hearing down and we've heard it here as well, there's a concern about property tax in the state of Ohio. And they're getting that complaint way more than they're getting the complaint about fair school funding. So they're just trying to manage how to best manage that. And what we're asking Senator Serino and the Senate and really all of our legislators is, you know, let us sit at the table then to help address that issue. Because unless we change the way that we fund schools in totality, there's not much that we can really do because we're relying on this and because we don't get a lot of support from the state, we don't really have another way to do it unless there's to change that. And what to their, to their defense, they don't understand how everything's connected. And every district is so different and so unique, so what works in one district doesn't work in the others. And it's, it is, it is somewhat to their, again, defense, an impossible task to be able to address the concerns of their constituents whilst keeping a balanced budget. And we can appreciate that and we appreciate him making the time and coming up and talking to us and hearing us out. And you know, when you do write Senator Serino, I would ask that you don't blame him for House bill 96. Just share your stories of what you love about mentor schools and how we use the things that we do to, you know, respect our taxpayers, to stretch that dollar. And give the local authority back to the board to come up with maybe what that cap and ceiling could be. If they don't feel comfortable with that, you know, make sure that they're reaching out to their local districts to make sure that they don't create a policy that they then have to change, which he's been forefront and honest with us about sometimes that that happens and we get that. We do that up here with policy, right? So the farther you are and the more you're dealing with, I can only imagine how crazy that can get. So we are very appreciative to Senator Serino in hearing us out and we will continue to reach out to him. He has given me the authorization to text him occasionally, so I do, I don't have his ear maybe as much as other members on the board, but he might regret allowing me to text him at some point. No, I joke, but we are very appreciative. I don't know, Mr. Heath, if there's anything you want to add on that discussion from your standpoint?
No, I would just echo your thoughts that, you know, he has been receptive to us. We've had a lot of conversation, especially around some of the CTE funding and the programs that we have from a workforce development standpoint here in our district. And we're continuing to push that envelope while we're also advocating for the removal of that carryover cap. And as we go through this process, those will be the things that we continue to push.
And then the only thing I'd say, you know, as we go through the process, the Senate's going to be coming out with their Senate bill here towards the end of the month. And I think we still have the ability to advocate. That's not the done, the done deal. I think it's, again, we would just continue to encourage our community to, in a positive way, share what they love about mentor schools. And how changes in funding can definitely impact us. It's not, you know, not a threat, you know, we, I think from our standpoint, we want to make sure that we have the funding to live up to the strategic plan, the five-year facility and capital plan that we have and the five-year technology plan that we have. It's not like we're not planning those things out and acting haphazardly, so. And we're constantly looking for ways to bend that curve and make reductions. Mr. Heath and I have assured the board over the next five years, we're looking to reduce $2 million a year. We're looking at potential reductions of staffing of anywhere from eight to 12 staff members going into next year. There's administrative changes that we're exploring as well as changes in raised structures for our administrative team as well. So there's lots of things that we're looking at to continue to control costs in the district. And I think, you know, we've shown that with reduction of staff, consolidation of buildings and as well trying to seek other additional revenue in the forms of grants or just kind of being creative with some of our advertising opportunities that we've had throughout the district or shared services. So we'll continue to do that. But our big ask is to help us have a funding model that's predictable and transparent, but also in the sense that leave it in local control. You know, the district has approved levies, our taxpayers approved the levies because they know what our goals and vision are and at times they do approve it and at times they don't. And you know, we want that vote to be left to the local taxpayer to tell us what they feel is acceptable and what it's not and not have interference from the state on that. But guardrails, we could live within, you know, there could, should be an upper limit, right? If we're, you know, it's kind of like, if you have too much money, that's money that could be back in our taxpayers, you know, we can be considerate of that. The only side note that I would advertise on that piece is if you're going to look at our cash balances, they should look at everybody's cash balances. If you haven't looked at the county cash balance or the city cash balances, those are also created through tax, people. Check them out. And if you need me to bring it up at the next meeting, I have a chart. So I'll leave it at that.
Madam President, may I chime in? Or would you like to speak first?
No, I have, I have nothing else.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Wade. That was so very in-depth and I think it helps explain, explain a lot. For folks who might have questions, Mr. Wade will be doing an encore performance of this and more on Thursday at 6:30 at Paradigm. I do invite folks to, from the community to come and ask questions, share concerns and, and as he said, to continue to advocate, there is still time to advocate with our senator and even with our House reps, Callender and Troy. Because of the way the, and I'll go over the timeline in my legislative report, but it's going to go to the Senate Finance Committee next. And there will be opportunities for testimony during that time as well. I mean, I submitted testimony back at the House. I mean, testimony happens throughout the process and it, and so today wasn't technically the last day. There's still time to submit testimony. And of course, we have to acknowledge that Senator Serino sits at the head of the Senate Finance Committee, so we're pretty lucky in that sense that, you know, he's got a lot of authority over this process and he has the ability to make a difference. I'm thrilled to hear that he sat down and met with all of, was it CFOs and supers? I recognize some faces.
Yeah, we had to invite the superintendents.
Yes, so I'm thrilled that he's interacting with our local folks and encouraged that conversation to move forward, but it's really important that he hears from all of his constituents. So I absolutely would push folks to continue to advocate and send, you could send it directly to him or of course, submit that testimony to the Senate Finance Committee next. And I do want to just respond, you know, I know I created the resolution, it's gone through a lot of iterations. We did have legal review it. I'm open to, you know, the 560, $560,000 plus, you know, as Mr. Wade said, this is a bit of a moving target in terms of, you know, the amounts that we added in there. As he said that, you know, the clawback amount is actually more like 12 million now. We can change the amounts. I'm open to doing so. We can put in a range there. You know, I, what I want to prioritize is alignment, right? But, so if that's the sticking point, you know, I, let's talk about it. I'm absolutely open to changing that.
So that's good to hear because I have an issue with that 560. I think it's, I know Bill didn't even include it in his testimony, so I feel like it's unnecessary. So I would like to remove that. Also, what I'm hearing from, and correct me, Mr. Wade, if I'm wrong, is you're okay if there's a cap as long as there's those provisions and the, like where we can earmark funds and things of that sort because, well, I guess just if you could answer that first.
I think we're open to a ceiling that if it could, I prefer it to be determined at a local level. There are districts that have, we have our cash balance policy that we have already. It has a floor of 20% as we've talked about a number of times. There are districts that also have a similar policy, but they have, they have a ceiling and it kind of limits it, you know, like I know Lakewood, Mr. Zeeman is, you know, you've guys heard me reference is a mentor of mine. There speaks to 90 days cash as the floor and it speaks to 150 days of cash as the ceiling. And if they get above 150 days cash, that they have to present a plan of action to the board of how that's being spent and why it's being there. And I think that kind of creates that guideline for that. So I'm open to those types of discussions. But to say that we, you know, you can't go above a specific level, if you do, you got to give it back, I think is short sighted, but if we can have parameters, I think it's something as a board, we could definitely come up with that would meet our needs and be responsive to the needs of the community and taxpayers as well.
I would like to see, thank you for that. I would like to see some of that language be worked into this resolution. I'd feel a little bit more comfortable taking out the 560 and having that language in there. I would feel more comfortable with that. I don't, I have an issue with the cap. I don't have an issue if there's going to be a cap that allows us to still have the provisions for our future planning. So I would be open to that. There's some verbiage in here that would have to be, you know, changed, but if it's worth it for us all five to have agreement on it, then I think we should look at that language and alter it.
I'd like to see, so if we're looking at the 560 specifically right now, it says the proposed budget would underfund the mentor exempted village district by $560,284 over the next two years. And there was a range. Could we, could we just change it to the range that you, we could say approximately and then somewhere in the range?
I take issue with that only because my issue with the 560 is that it's, it's not anything we really thought we were going to get. Bill and I had a discussion with Rose yesterday, or I don't even know what day it was, but the actual.
Probably about today, actually.
Was it yesterday?
I think it might have been this morning.
It was this morning? It was this morning.
Feels like yesterday. This meeting keeps on going, it's going to be yesterday.
Yeah, okay, so this morning. And, you know, I, I think what we talked about is the November forecast compared to, because that, we didn't think we were going to get all this money anyways. It was never communicated to us that we were going to receive that much money. So I think it's deceiving to the community. I don't want to put my name on something that is possibly, you know, deceiving as well-meaning as it is. I would like to see that taken out of there. I would speak to the amount that we're, the 55,000 that we're going to lose over the next two years, the approximate 55,000. I would 100% support that being in there. But I do want to make sure that we have something in here about the provisions or even like Bill said, a ceiling and a floor. I would be open to that.
What I see is it says 560,285 over the next two years compared to what would be provided under a fully funded FSFP. So if it's the amount, I can see putting approximately or range, but it's not deceiving when it says compared to what would be provided under a fully funded FSFP. That, that is an accurate statement.
But we never anticipated getting that fund, those funds, right, Bill? We never really thought we were going to get that amount.
That was a promise by the legislature. It was a promise made by the legislature that we would get those funds. It was a, it was a six-year plan from the.
Then why didn't we include it in our November forecast?
Uh, because I, yeah, I mean, it's because it wasn't, it's not done. So we kind of make assumptions on what we've seen historically.
So what did you assume, like, why? Because that's a big difference.
I assumed the phase in, well, because some of the, some of the fair school funding plan, the main difference here is because of transportation and special transportation, which aren't on the six-year plan of full phase in. Aren't, my assumptions assume a fair school funding, full transfer, or not transfer, excuse me, full fair school funding plan, DPIA by the end of the sixth year. There are other aspects of the fair school funding plan that aren't on that six-year plan. They were reduced at a longer rate. So as that phase in is different, that's where we don't receive that money in our, in our standpoint. And being a guaranteed district, it kind of gets wonky because we're just ending up further and further on the guarantee.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I don't, I mean, it's fine if the majority wants to go with that. I'm not okay putting my name on something that is not truly what we were anticipating losing, so.
I agree. Can we just pull that number out and just say? I think, you know, I guess the, then what I meant was, when I was amenable to changing the number, I think the number is almost incidental, whether it's there or not, there was a fair school funding plan that was in place. It was promised. Public school districts certainly expected lawmakers to follow through on that promise. They are not doing that. I mean, so that's the most important piece to me, whether we put 560, whether we put 522, whether we put 668. The number to me is less important than the concept. So I'd like to see that stay and, you know, we can do an approximate amount, we can do a range. But that's really important, I think, an important part of the resolution.
That's fine. I just don't want to beat a dead horse then because I'm not okay with putting my name on that. And I did provide testimony and the frivolous spending that I was speaking of, just so everybody's clear, I don't want anybody taking that and sending me emails about it. Bill had provided an update and actually said, I think your words were even frivolous, like if there is a cap, it could cause schools to retain that money and spend it on non-essential items is really, I think, what you were saying. Instead of the essentials, instead of giving it back.
Yeah, I modeled through the board, just to kind of explain to the community, our plan to reduce by $2 million a year with and without the cap. And with the cap, it would be silly for us to reduce $2 million a year. Because we would lose that, we're going to lose that revenue. So it's almost double, double getting double penalized. And I don't think that's good policy, right? It's not, that's not the intent of the policy. I understand the intent of the policy. I think there's better ways to do that. There's other ways that we can provide tax relief more thoughtfully. So to do that is the case. I would just point out, and I hear what the board is saying, the $560,000 can change based on assumptions being made, you know, would it be worthwhile for the sake of unity just to get rid of the number and just say the proposed budget would underfund the mentor school district? And not have a number? Because it's 0.5% of our revenue. So I mean.
So say the proposed budget would underfund the mentor exempted village district compared to what would be fully, be provided under a fully funded FSFP?
Yeah.
That works for me.
That's a factual statement.
I'm fine with that.
Any way that you look at it.
Okay, do we need a motion for that?
I'll motion to remove the verbiage that says by 560,284 over the next two years and then just strike through that.
Number though, right? Just the number?
The, well, that's fine. I mean.
Yeah, okay. I'll second that.
I need more discussion. Do we have to do a separate motion if we want to change anything else in this or one at a time? Okay, yeah, okay. So it, to be clear, is over the next two years, are we leaving that or are we just taking out the by 564?
I'm fine with whatever. I mean, I'm open to what the board.
I think, I think it's clear, I'm not one to get lost in language. So I would say it's not, it doesn't really matter if you class out what you have because as long as it says compared to what would be provided under a fully funded, that's, I think that's the root of what Ms. Marchaza was trying to get at there.
Correct, yes.
And the factual statement is there in the sense that the proposed budget does not do that.
So for, coming at it from a grammar perspective, we could strike everything from the dollar sign to two years, comma, right?
Yep. Yeah, that's what Mrs. Cook has next to me too.
Great.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
I'm going to change my notes so I have this right, if you give me a second. So we had Marchaza and then we had Jesslyn and then we had Payne. And Marchaza. Okay, Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Aipolo?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
So that amendment is approved.
Okay, Mrs. Aipolo, it sounded like you wanted to make an amendment?
Well, yeah, so if I can support it if we can change the language because again, I don't want to have my opponent testimony conflict with this. So if you guys are okay with aligning with what Mr. Wade said about having, if there is a cap, having provisions, then I would, I would motion to make those changes. I think it would affect a couple of these air mentions in the cap.
So under opposes, where it says oppose it, or there's several.
Yeah. Right under the one we just changed. I don't know if that would need to be changed.
I don't know if you'd almost add another whereas.
I hesitate to do this, frankly. I, I think that, because nothing, there's nothing that has been proposed yet about that, right? So, for me, it, it's almost like we're making something up, rather than responding to something that's already been proposed, if that makes sense. So, to, to me, that, I, I think I would not be comfortable with making that change in particular.
There's been, I want to say there's been discussion at the state level about some of that, because just speaking with-
There has been, yes.
Yeah, so I don't think it's out of, I mean, I think, I think what's really valuable here is if we do get all five of us to agree to send something like this, it, it does speak a little louder than our individual testimony for the next open slot of testimony. To me, it would be worth it to, I stand firm as well on the provisions. If there is a cap, like worst-case scenario, we should speak to that, because if there is a cap, we should also advocate for, if there's going to be a cap, we should have provisions.
I think that we will have the chance to do that, but responding to something that hasn't been proposed is kind of where I, I'm just not comfortable going, yeah.
I, I have to concur with that. When, when we're writing this, we are writing our opposition or our support for a specific plan. And right now, the, the proposal at the table is a 30% cap. I'm opposed to that. I'm unequivocally opposed to that. So, if you can't, if you're not comfortable saying that you're opposed to that, then, then that's fine. That, that's your vote, and, and I can respect that. But, that, that is what they're proposing right now. And, or, you're either opposed to it, or you're not. It, that's that simple.
The cap is the worst aspect of the whole plan. The cap would have profound impact, and as Bill pointed out, in several different ways. And, there's no cap on commissioners' funds, city funds. They're able to maintain their budget and plan accordingly and spend away. Where we're hampered by House Bill 920, it's, I think deceptive to imply that that's going to return taxpayer dollars as tax, property tax relief. That's, that's a bait and switch. We'll have to come back and ask for the money back, because we're going to need it to run the district. The cap at all just strikes me as being ill-advised. Nobody in their right mind is going to push a levy that exceeds the need.
Right. Now, I, I am encouraged that they're listening. I'm encouraged that Senator Serino spoke with us. I'm encouraged that they're listening and that there may be a change, but the fact is, there, there isn't right now. So what we have right now is, is this, and we have to decide how we're going to respond to this.
I guess, I think we're beating a dead horse at this point, but the, I just want to make it clear, I, I do not support the cap as written. I was the one who brought it up, because it was outside, it was not included in the original resolution from last month, and I voiced my concerns last month and said I would like to see the cap written in the resolution. So, just to be clear with the community, I also don't agree with the cap. I do agree with a cap and provisions. To a certain degree, I'd like to see that in there. My testimony, I feel like, does provide more of where I'm at on the bill. I don't think it's out of the realm to include provisions in our resolution, because right now we are being, it, it's right now looking like there is going to be a cap. So, worst-case scenario, I think we should speak to that, to provide those provisions, so that we don't have to continuously go back to the taxpayer. I respect your guys' opinion, but I think at this point, we're at a standstill.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, then-
I do. I just want to, first, I just want to thank Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade for your kind words to Senator Serino, because he has become the lightning rod to criticism because he's the chair. But I just want to, to state for the record that four out of his nine children graduated from public school, and right now, out of his 34 grandkids, the ones that have been in school, more than half attended or graduated from public school. So, the insinuations that he's out to dismantle public education is pretty laughable. I just wanted to make that clear. I respect that you don't want to make the change on here, which is the only reason I can't support it, because again, it would conflict with my testimony. We, you know, we already do have to go back to the taxpayers. So, I just thought, we owe it to the taxpayers to find some relief if it's feasible, and so that's why I support the cap with provisions. And I, I think that since we have to go to them anyways for a levy, that they might be more willing to support it if they feel like their next tax bill is a little bit lower. So, but again, I wish we could have consensus on this, but I think we do in our hearts, but with the language here, I, I don't think I'm going to be able to.
Any more discussion? And please call the roll.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Abstain.
Ms. Payne?
I've already provided my opponent testimony, that I feel more reflects my opinion, so I will abstain.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes 302.
Yes, with, with the one amendment, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. The last item under business is the approval of the resolution to adopt the special education model policies and procedures.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Just want to say, as a special education teacher, I'm a little disappointed in them. I was definitely hoping that we would have better caseload sizes. In Ohio, we are the, one of the highest caseload sizes, our student ratio to special educators, and the absolute highest for speech-language pathologists. So, it's very disappointing for, I think I was in grad school when they said, "Oh, we're the highest, we're definitely getting these lowered," and it hasn't happened yet. So, I, I am disappointed in them, but we will definitely follow the rule, and I hope that in our district, we do not have to carry the max load. That would be ridiculous. So. Any other discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion's carried 50.
Next, we have the legislative report. Ms. Marchaza?
Thank you, okay. Trying to remember where I put that. Just give me one moment. There it is. All right. I'll try to move through things quickly. The State Board of Education, just updates, they have some rules open for public comment about employment of licensed, excuse me, non-licensed individuals with criminal convictions, as well as employment of school bus and van drivers with criminal convictions. Those are sort of part of a normal five-year review process. The rules are open for public comment until June 1. As for governor updates, last week, Lieutenant Governor Jim Tressel and Mike Duffy from the Department of Higher Education and the Governor's Executive Workforce Board announced a new statewide innovation waiver for the College Credit Plus program. It makes some changes to the placement test prerequisites. Now, most importantly, as been, as has been the topic of discussion tonight, is the biennial budget, House Bill 96. Senate Education Committee began testimony last week. That has continued into this week. Last week, they heard from OASBO BA, do you call it BASA, is it B.A.S.A.? Which, you call it BASA, okay. That's, which is the superintendent organization, as well as OSBA and numerous school board members and administrators. There were two hearings this week. There are a lot of other mandates attached to this subbill, but we're not certain which will stay and which will go, once it works through the Senate. The timeline, as promised, after public testimony, the Senate will make its changes to House Bill 96 and pass their own version by June 11. House and Senate leadership will then deliberate the bill in conference committee with a name to finalize the spending plan the week of June 25. And at that point, really, anything can happen. Anything can kind of come back into the bill, so be prepared. Many of the Senate's education bills are probably going to get folded into this version of HB 96. And then the deadline for Senate amendments is May 16. At that point, Senator Serino will review all of the submitted amendments and decide what goes and what stays. So, it is very important that we contact him this week. And again, very important that you join us on Thursday evening at 6:30 at Paradigm, where you can ask questions of Mr. Wade. Mr. Heath, I think you're planning on attending that one. I know you're all over the place this week.
Yeah, I will be there.
Pop in, at least. Okay. And you can contact Senator Serino at 614-644-7718, or at serino@ohiosenate.gov. You can also submit testimony to the Senate Finance Committee. I'm unsure what those dates will be, but we can definitely keep you posted on. When those opportunities are available, you can submit testimony via email, or you can, by, excuse me, by uploading it to the website, or you can show up in person if you feel like driving down to Columbus. Okay, so that's it on the budget. Do stay tuned to our Facebook pages, as well as the Manners, Mentor Public Schools Facebook page, and we'll, we'll try to provide some updates as that moves along. Pending legislation, there are over 100, more than 100 pending bills just about public education. It's only May. The House right now is really focused on property tax reform for reasons that we've already discussed here tonight. There are several of them. What I will mention is House Bill 129, which includes, will include emergency substitute and income, income tax levies in the 20-mill floor. That would, that would make an impact here for sure. And then there's also Senate Bill 66, which is very similar, but includes inside village in the 20-mill floor, which could definitely impact a lot of districts. Also of note is House Bill 158, which is a total cell phone ban. It had its third hearing on May 6. I believe amendments were added to this bill to make exceptions for, for medical reasons, for carrying a phone, for students having a phone. Yes, for monitoring of medical conditions. This is likely to pass either as a standalone bill, or they could tuck it into the budget as well. So we're looking at a total cell phone ban, probably for next school year. We've also got, I'm not, I'm going to actually not go through all of these, I'm, I'm going to go through just a couple. Some of them I've already reported on. This one, we've talked about before. This is now the third bill of its type. It's called House Bill 153. It's one of three different bills that moves away from making school board races nonpartisan. So as most of us know, school board races in Ohio are supposed to be nonpartisan, but this bill in particular would require state and school district board members to be nominated by primary election and to appear on the ballot with a party designation. Senate Bill 107 is very similar. We've talked about that one before in previous reports. That one requires candidates for both the state board and local school boards to declare political party affiliation and participate in primaries. So again, very similar. And then there's another one, House Bill 267, which would do very similar things. So, that one's in committee right now. It seems that this, this is sort of a trend that our state house seems to be moving in, so we should all be prepared, those of us who are running this summer. Actually, no, I'm sorry, probably won't go into effect before this November election, but for the next cycle. Okay. And then finally, this one's kind of important. I know a lot of folks are talking about it. House Bill 114, this would alter age requirements for kindergarten admission. There is an adopted amendment, too. This would reinstate both following current law provisions. One, the referral and evaluation process by which a public school may admit to kindergarten a four-year-old who will turn five by January 1. And the, the other provision is the law that permits a child who will not be five by January 1 of the requested school year of admittance to be admitted to kindergarten early under a school district's student acceleration policy. So that could definitely change some things for, I would imagine, some enrollment numbers going forward, too. So we'll keep an eye on that one. And that's the end of my report.
Mrs. Marchaza, do you think that the kindergarten would, would start before next school year? Would that affect some of our new kindergartners?
I'd have to check the status. This one isn't moving very quickly. We can keep an eye on it. Anything can really happen, so I'll keep an eye on it for us.
Thank you.
Of course.
I know there was a bill that was proposed to prohibit diversity, equity, and inclusion in public schools.
Senate Bill 113?
155, House Bill 155.
Oh, House, okay. There are two, yes. So there's one in the House and one in the Senate.
So I just, I think we need to keep a look at that, too, because the executive order is still on a hold, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So if this was to move forward and pass, then it would take precedent over the executive order, right? Is that right, Mr. Heath? Am I saying that right?
Then we'd be calling Eric to see what to do next.
That's House Bill 155?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marchaza, can you email me your update, since I missed some of it?
Oh, were you, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even know she was-
I ran to the restroom, so I missed some of it.
Of course, can do. Actually, we used, on that same note, we used to have, when Tom would do it, it would be in the agenda for us to see it as well, just so we can kind of all come prepared if there's, since we're doing some resolutions and things like that. It might be good for all of us to be on the same page, and if there's something we want to focus on, if we could upload that document maybe into the agenda like Tom used to do, that'd be great. Oh, did he? Oh, okay. I didn't realize he used to do, did Mary do that as well? I don't, I don't know. Yeah, I didn't remember that happening.
I don't remember it being in the agenda. I remember it being just on the table when we got here.
Or maybe he gave it to us. I know we had it.
Yeah, I think, I think he would print it out when he would get it in advance, because I know sometimes, because him and Mary both just read right from the OSBA piece, and there'd be times he would say, "Oh, I didn't get it yet."
Yeah, yes. But it would be helpful, maybe, if we can just-
Just have it.
Get it before, yeah, or even include it in a board update or something. Yeah, I, I can definitely do that. I know our materials are due a lot sooner. Like, sometimes I do late and breaking updates, but maybe I can kind of submit a version of it up until that point-
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then make alterations going forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right.
Oh, you need me to move, don't you?
We next have the student achievement report. Mrs. Jesslyn?
All righty. I'm ready, I'm ready. All righty. The 2024 school year is winding down. With their teachers' guidance and encouragement, Manner students have grown as young learners. Here's a sample of the opportunities and events from the past few weeks. The annual AP Scholars Breakfast honored the advanced level of scholastic achievement by Manner High students who have earned this prestigious distinction. The College Credit Plus Lakeland at Paradigm program continues to grow. This past school year, 326 Manner students attempted a total of 3,358 college credits through our partnership with Lakeland Community College. That equals an estimated $1.4 million in college tuition savings for Manner families. Starting this fall, Manner students will have access to over 39 college credits right on our high school campus. No need to leave the building. The National Honor Society induction ceremony was held last week. For 98 years, Manner High's chapter has recognized students who rise to the challenge of the four pillars of scholarship, service, character, and leadership. Congratulations to the 80 honorees. Mr. and Mrs. Sawyer announced the first recipients of the Jack B. Sawyer Memorial Scholarships in memory of their son. Congratulations to Sophie Valentine and Kristin Rosiak. In addition, the Sawyers generously hosted a delicious breakfast for the whole senior class. On Friday, May 2, Manner High held the annual Coman Spring Zonerville Military Commitment Ceremony. Congratulations to our eight seniors who have decided to put service above self by choosing careers in the United States Armed Forces. We recently celebrated Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week across the district to honor our educators and support staff. They continue to go above and beyond each day to teach and inspire the students in their care. It's exciting that Manner High students have so many options to fine-tune their personal plans for future success. Our longstanding tradition of the senior project is a special opportunity for them to immerse themselves in the professional world. This exposure can give them a chance to network with experts and build confidence. This year, there are over 430 members of the senior class participating in this valuable option. Both Shore and Memorial Middle Schools recently competed, completed their annual eighth-grade trip to Washington, DC. Students visited key historical sites, museums, and monuments that brought their social studies curriculum to life. Hats off to our Science Olympia teams and their success on behalf of themselves and Manner schools at the state level. We appreciate the hard work and all that their coaches do to support their long hours of preparation. To cheer them on, there was a rousing Cardinal Pride clapout through the halls of Manner High. Lake Tran unveiled the winning design of a student bus rep art contest. A Manner High artist has won the first place in each of these five annual contests. Sophomore Lily Walker created this design for 50 years of a cleaner, greener Lake County. Her design will be displayed on one of Lake Tran's dial-a-ride buses for the next year. The Ohio PTA has announced the 24-25 Reflections state winners. Shore students had impressive honors in all five arts categories. Manner Theater's 101st season closed with the marvelous musical Nine to Five last month. Enthusiastic audiences greeted each of their performances. To the delight of students and staff, our Manner Safety Forces visited the students at CARES for an array of hands-on activities. Under the guidance of elementary art teachers, an exciting annual exhibition was mounted at Paradigm. Students in grades K through 5 had their work presented in a gallery format that was attended by hundreds of families. It showed a wide array of media, content, and styles, revealing the enormous creativity of the young artists. April and May have offered many chances to celebrate music here at the Fine Arts Center. April and May have offered many chances to celebrate music here at the Fine Arts Center. Concerts by the middle school and Mentor High orchestras, bands, and choirs filled the hall with beautiful music in the fine tradition that spans nearly 100 years in this community. Selected work by Mentor High senior art students was on display last week. Using the department's wildly creative art heist theme, the Fine Arts Center welcomed a capacity crowd to celebrate their work, representing also an array of styles and media. The sophistication and quality of the show was lauded by the visitors. Little Leaders Career Day delighted both the preschoolers at the high school and teens who were their teachers for a day. They offered early exposure to career exploration for the darling four-year-olds. Kindergarten registration for the 2526 school year is well underway. For children who will be five years old, honor before September 30, 2025, please be sure to register your little ones for fall. Our seniors are getting ready to fly from the nest, earning their diplomas for this milestone, Rite of Passage. Commencement will be held on Sunday, June 1. We're proud and happy for them, and can't wait to see where their journeys will lead them as Cardinal alumni. For our K through 11 classes, we look back on a year of learning and growth and wish all of our students and their families a safe, happy summer ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we have the Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath, just a quick update. We are currently looking at a surplus in the revenue of where we were projecting in the forecast by about $2.8 million. The majority of that coming in the form of local property taxes, coming in at about $1.2 million higher, and $1 million higher on investment income than we had projected. The interest rates have stayed higher than we were projecting that they would based on the economy as it goes through. So that accounts for the majority of that. And our current expenses are still coming in about $800,000 less than we expected. We're now 10 months through. Most of our spending at the building and department level has completed. We wrapped that up in April. So, you know, when we do the May update here on the 29th, we will see kind of where we're at, and then we'll only have two months left, which would be the entire month of May and June, and then we close out the fiscal year, as you all know. So things are trending in a good direction, so that concludes my report. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you.
Not hearing anything. Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath, I ask for items B through I in a den of meeting to be acted upon in one motion.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion's carry 50. That concludes my part of the agenda.
We do not have unfinished business this evening, so we will move on to new business. And I have two items under new business on the agenda. The first item is meeting efficiency, and I will give the floor to Mrs. Payne or Mrs. Ayapolo. They both requested that this be on the agenda. In the spirit of meeting efficiency, and because it's 9 o'clock, I'm okay with moving this conversation to our special meeting, if you guys are okay with that. I know, too, you didn't get some of this information till last minute anyway, so.
I would appreciate that. I, I know that I, I've seen it for less than 24 hours.
I forgot. I don't have any.
Mr. Wade, yes. Mr. Heath, yes.
That's a yes, that's a yes. And I did receive your ideas, and I have some of my own, too, so I will, I can send them to you, so that we all have everything at the same time. Are we allowed to do that? Are you allowed to send it? Yeah? No?
As long as it's.
Just information?
Information, yeah.
Information.
Yeah, because you're.
We can't go back and forth.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And if you want to give that to me, I'll put it in the board update this week, because I'll also say that Mr. Wade and I, along with some of the administrative team, had come up with a couple of ideas for meeting efficiencies, too, so we can toss it all out there and then have the discussion at the special meeting, too.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Perfect.
Okay. Well, that's even, that's, that's wonderful.
That's efficient.
That's very efficient. The other, the second item on this agenda was the America 250 discussion, and we did hear a little bit of that from one of our public speakers. Do we have any discussion that we want to have on that?
I think the only thing, I don't think we need to go through that whole slideshow or anything, but we heard from Ms. O'Brien tonight. She had talked about a couple of dates. I was just wondering, maybe we can, Mr. Heath, maybe look over that and see what we can have our teachers send out or include our students. And I think that picnic sounded really neat. And I know I could speak to the Liberty Camp USA. My, my kids have gone to it the last, gosh, I don't know, four years, and it's been really beneficial. It's really cool how they do the reenactment. So I'm assuming that, like she mentioned, they're going to include some of this in that Liberty Camp as well, which would be great.
And again, I shared some of the documentation that Mrs. O'Brien dropped off for us as well, and, and shared that in a board update last week, so everybody does have some of that, those flyers as well. So we'll continue to kind of work through some of this, and obviously, it's a huge year for the United States here, especially in 2026, when we hit that 250 milestone. So, yeah, we will work through that and continue to work with, oh, she took off. Ms. O'Brien, just to, to make sure that we have all the dates correct and, and figure out what we can work through with our administrative team.
I think that principals might like the Liberty Bell as well. I know when I saw the Liberty Bell in person and, and went through that, where it's displayed and, and learning about, you know, liberty, it, it was very impactful, and I, I think that would be nice for our students to be able to see firsthand with a replica.
Okay, at this time, we have hearing of the public on any topic.
Our speakers are David Lima, Lynn Mazika, and Lindsay Wall. Ms. Mazika, I'm getting the.
Ms. Mazika's doing the efficiency tonight. Thank you.
She supports meeting efficiency.
Not that Mr. Lima doesn't support meeting efficiency. I don't want him to get a bad rap.
Dave Lima, Board President, Cook, Board Members, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade. House Bill 96 is a bad bill for the reasons previously mentioned, but for another reason. It also seeks to eliminate the elected, the 11 elected positions to the State Board of Education and reduce the number of governor-appointed positions from eight to five. The State Board of Education was created to give the people a voice and role in state educational policymaking. This bill, in its current form, would give the five appointed individuals through the Department of Education and workforce the responsibility to oversee K through 12 policies. Additionally, this bill threatens public education, as we've all mentioned this, through the Fair School Funding Plan and promotes the voucher system. The two provisions, the 30% cap on reserves and the proposed change in the composition of the State Board of Education, need to be stripped from House Bill 96. The bill has moved to the Senate, where these provisions can be removed. Contact members of the Senate Finance Committee and demand the removal of these two provisions. Now is the time for public action to preserve public education in Ohio. And now is the time for the General Assembly to no longer shirk their responsibility and abide by Ohio's Constitution to secure a thorough and efficient system of common schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Lindsay Wall and I, as some of you know, I am the Ohio State Director for an organization called Defensive Democracy. And we were super excited. We partnered with Mrs. Frazold, who is an influencer on TikTok and is super into education, very supportive of public education, and we partnered with her through the month of May to do a thinkathon for all of our teachers. Since it is teacher appreciation, it was the week. We're calling it the month, because school board meetings go through all out the month of May. And I, you all know, I could stand up here and go on and on about our teachers and how much we appreciate them. I think the gifts and notes and love letters that we've sent our teachers this week, we'll have to do for the moment. I do, I was out of breath earlier when I was up here, so I wanted to finish my, my thing from before, because I think it ties in here. Our kids deserve better. Our students are worth it. Our schools, teachers, and communities are worth it. And if for any reason you think they are not, I dare you to go to the Cardinal TV YouTube page and watch just a couple of the most recent events held throughout our district. From concerts, art shows, community actions, and just last night, the senior award ceremony. My son's second-grade teacher shared with us this week that his class, they did their eye-ready testing. They did so good as a class, on their average growth was 156% from the start of the year. Every single student finished the year in green, which is grade level or above. That's the first for any class that he's ever had. I know there's a rumor circulating that our kids are graduating without the ability to read, write, and do math. Students, I see you, and I am amazed, so amazed, by how smart, talented, and unique all of you truly are. To those who may not have the highest GPA of their class, I see you, too, excelling in your own special way that may not be noted on paper, but I see you trying, keep trying. Teachers, keep trying. And I will fight, and I will keep trying to get fair school funding, as we should all keep fighting for our schools to have a full and fair-funded education. I think it is unfortunate that we had board members vote against the MTA contract. Board members that voted against the teachers, because instead of working and fighting toward fair school funding, they would rather err on the side of caution, because they think we might possibly lose funds. That right there, friends, is the biggest red flag, and I hope you see it. I hope our teachers see and hear what is actually going on. And I think it is so unfortunate that we do have teachers paying attention, but they're terrified to speak up, because the teachers and staff members who have spoke up have been targeted, including volunteers. And I have receipts, so please don't make faces. Those teachers and staff members have been targeted and have risked losing their job because they wanted to voice their opinion. So I will keep using my voice to stand up for teachers, staff, and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We do not have an executive session on the agenda this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Ayapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:08 PM.